Good morning, everyone, and welcome to all who are joining us this morning. It is 9:00 a.m., and I call this meeting to order. Casey Griffin on our staff will call the roll to establish a quorum.
Mr. Cobbins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Here.
Mr. Holt.
Here.
Dr. House.
Victoria Harple, designated for Dr. House.
Mr. Jensen. Mr. Mullenhour.
Here.
Mr. Morrow.
Here.
Mr. Wells.
Here.
Madam Chairman.
Here.
Madam Chairman, you have ten members present.
Thank you. We have a quorum present, and we are duly convened. Without objection, Mr. Larry Jensen is excused. I now call on Dr. Sarah Morrison to provide us with a recap from yesterday's board workshop.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's good to be with everyone this morning. I will give a quick recap of our proceedings yesterday, starting with just the mention of a really good, short discussion on the draft TESA rules. I think it took about five hours. So if you go back and watch the tape, we were really appreciative, though, of the department's attention to that draft rule, set of rules. We took a lot of time to go through and ask questions about each chapter contained within that rule, and had some good conversation on the record yesterday regarding that important legislation that's moving through towards implementation. We also then had a discussion with THEC, members of the THEC staff, about the college going rate and the drop there, and some of the things that we might begin to think about together with their board to address that concerning trend. And then we ended our day with a discussion of, again, a draft master plan by Ale Gaffey on our staff, with discussion by the board about where that's headed ahead of our October meeting. So it was a full day dominated by, like I said, just a short discussion about the TESA rules. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Before we move into the approval of the consent agenda, I need to make a notation for everyone. We will be pulling three of the TESA-related items at the request of the Department of Education. That is in order to provide them with more time to provide us with edits. The item numbers are 2I, L, and M. These items will be presented to the board at our special call meeting in August. I also want to note that Item 3Q will be separated for us to consider the vote, actually to consider the vote on Rhodes College separately. I do want to call on Mr. Eby because I think he has some remarks to make on one of our other items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. I do believe that it's appropriate for us to periodically recognize our teachers and our educators for the outstanding work that they perform throughout the year. And to that end, I recently put out a tweet, and the Chair put out an outstanding op-ed just recently. And I thought it would be good for us to have a resolution that this board could recognize the teachers. And thinking about that, so I worked with Nathan, and he put out a draft and worked on it, and then he sent it to the Chair, and she had some comments. But thinking about that, I think it would be better timed if we do this at the beginning of the school, closer to the beginning of the school year, when the teachers come back, so they can hear it and see it, and be better timed, and I think have more impact on that. So I would propose or make a motion that we would withhold Item Y and put it on the agenda for the August 11th meeting.
Is that a motion that requires seconding at this time?
Yes, go ahead.
Second.
Mr. Mullenhour provides the second. Mr. Eby provides the motion. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved, and we will consider that item in our special call meeting in August. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the notations and removal of certain items that I've already shared with you? Is there a motion? Mr. Holt, or was it Mr. Wells? Mr. Wells provides the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. -- okay, Mr. Darnell. It's very difficult to see who's -- thank you. Mr. Darnell provides the second. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call Mr. Casey, please.
Mr. Cobbins.
Aye.
Mr. Darnell.
Aye.
Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Holt.
Aye.
Mr. Jensen. Mr. Mullenhour.
Aye.
Mr. Morrow. Mr. Wells.
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chairman.
Aye.
Madam Chairman, you have eight ayes.
The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Thank you. Moving into action items on first reading, the usual reminders to our presenters to please state your name and title for the record. The first item is 2A, Non-Public School Administration Rule. Ms. Angie Sanders.
Okay. Good morning, Madam Chair and members. Angie Sanders, General Counsel for the State Board of Education, and presenting to you all on first reading revisions to the Non-Public Schools Administrative Rules 0520-07-01. Tennessee Code Annotated 4963001 requires every child residing in Tennessee between the ages of six and seventeen to attend a public or non-public school. Non-public schools are defined in law as including private schools, church-related schools, and independent home schools. The law provides that the State Board through the Department of Education shall enforce standards for private schools. And this rule currently establishes the administrative requirements for non-public schools in Tennessee, but has not been updated since 2017. The revisions are proposed to remove outdated language and provide greater clarity regarding the maintenance of student records, transfers of students between and among public and non-public schools, and include the addition of a new section regarding reporting and monitoring requirements. We made revisions to this chapter in consultation with the Non-Public Schools Advisory Council, and want to thank them for their engagement in this process, as well as the Department of Education. Board staff will conduct a rulemaking hearing between first and final reading to collect additional public feedback before bringing any additional revisions back to the board on final reading. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you all have.
Questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Mr. Eby?
Yes. In this rule, we talk about Category 1, 2, 3, and 4 schools, but I didn't see the definition of those. Then I did find that they're on a different rule. I would suggest that between first and second reading, we refer to that or provide those definitions in this rule.
Yes, we can definitely do that. We can add a cross-reference to the rule I'm going to talk about in just a moment for those definitions. Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Mullenhour.
I'd like to say, first of all, Angie, I appreciate the time that you and I have been able to spend together reviewing this, and I intend to vote to approve both this item as well as Item 2B, which are related in some respects. But I want to mention a couple of things. First of all, there's a tremendous amount of content that this board has been asked to evaluate and consider over the last few weeks, mostly with respect to TESA. This is a very important area, and I know that Angie has worked very hard, and our staff has worked very hard, to consider these proposed rule changes. In light of the fact that there's so much material that we're currently evaluating, I intend to approve it today, but spend a fair amount of time between now and final reading just making sure that we truly understand the implications, both intended and unintended, of these proposed rule changes. So with respect to, in particular, non-public schools, we need to make sure that we are accounting for both the current state of affairs and the people who are making decisions and enforcing policies or rules, and then also take into account the fact that future people will be asked to interpret those rules and requirements, and we need to make sure that we safeguard against misunderstanding in the future. So I've begun working with a handful of people to seek input from experts in the field. I know that Angie has done the same, and I would just invite anyone who has an interest in non-public school rules to send us their comments and emails, and we will look forward to engaging, again, between now and final reading. This is a first reading, so this does not become a rule as of today. It will have to go before final, before this board again in October for final reading, so we'll have time to consider edits and changes, and again, safeguards for the interests of the non-public schools. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Mullenhour. I think many of us probably hold the same sentiments, because it has been a lot of material, in particular for this board meeting. All board meetings are pretty action-packed, but this one in particular, more so than many others. And we do have the luxury, in this particular case, with these items on first reading, to have that time in between. And I know, I think, most of our members do seek that constituent feedback, in particular when it applies to, in this case, a non-public school. It certainly behooves us to get that information. And so to that end, I think, yes, Mr. Eby. No, go ahead.
I was just going to use this as a good opportunity to bring up another point between first and second readings. That is an opportunity to provide input. But I know I've gotten some input on some of these that we're going to talk about today, like, three days before we had the second reading. So I would encourage, we want input, but I would encourage those people to provide input as early as you can to provide us an opportunity to work with our staff to get good responsive answers to those. So please, give us input, but give it to us early. Don't wait till the last minute.
Again, very important comments, because we are trying to do our due diligence, and we do not do this in a vacuum. We do seek input from the field and from all of our constituents. I know I do with directors of schools, and sometimes it's, you're not getting things that you'd like to hear sooner, it's later, and it's a challenge. And so, thank you all for those comments. Anybody else want to add anything?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr.?
Just for the record, wanted to say, obviously, I lead an independent school, and have worked with counsel on conflict of interest, and it is appropriate that I still can be a participant in those things. But also, then, wanted to just say that publicly, that we've checked, and I've looked, and it's not too dissimilar to Nick, you know, administrator of a school. But also, just, you know, for the members and for anybody who's listening in, I think understanding, A, the diversity of independent schools within Nashville, both size and scope and mission, our independent schools are mission-driven schools, and so there's a uniqueness of those missions that go across the independent schools. And so when we're soliciting feedback, I think it's important to both match up the feedback with the categories and types of schools, because there's different needs and different purposes within those schools, and, just like in our public school system, different financial capacities and constraints within those schools that, like Jordan said, making sure there's not unintended consequences that would put schools in opposition of their missions, which is why they exist, in trying to be compliant, but then in, you know, direct contradiction to what they're trying, contradiction to what they're trying to do. And so just, again, this is a newer domain. We haven't looked at it in quite some time, long before I was on the board. And, but it's important, there's a lot of independent schools that have a lot of unique purposes, and so just want to make sure that our member feedback is representative of those things as we come into final reading. And I look forward to working with, you know, the middle Tennessee colleagues of all the different schools to gather their feedback as well. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Hearing no other questions, are we ready to vote? Is there a motion to approve this item?
I so move.
Mr. Eby provides the motion. Is there a second? Mr. Cobbins provides the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Thank you. The next item is yours.
Yes, thank you. And I really appreciate that discussion. Getting feedback is the way that we make sure that these rules are the best that they can be. And going back to Bob's question, or comment just a moment ago, the best way to provide that feedback, in addition to emailing staff or board members, is through the rulemaking process. We set those up, post all of that on our website. We send out information in our newsletters, so if the public is watching, and you're not signed up for the State Board of Education's newsletter, you can do that on our website, and you'll get lots of great information about our board meetings, our rulemaking hearings, and lots of other good information, like Sanders' review. So, thank you all. So moving on to the next item, again, Angie Sanders, General Counsel for the Board. This is first reading revisions to the Non-Public Schools Approval Process Rule 0520-07-02. This rule establishes the different categories of non-public schools in Tennessee, the process for approval of non-public schools and their accrediting agencies, as well as the requirements that schools and accrediting agencies must comply with. Again, this rule has not been materially updated since 2017, and so significant revisions are proposed to remove outdated language, ensure consistency with current state and federal laws and rules, and to provide greater clarity regarding the specific requirements applicable to each category of non-public school. The revisions also outline the process for ensuring schools and their accrediting or membership agencies are remedying areas of noncompliance that have been identified, and a process for revocation of approval in certain circumstances when noncompliance is not addressed. Again, we've made the revisions to this in consultation with the Tennessee Non-Public Schools Advisory Council, as well as the Department of Education, and will conduct a rulemaking hearing between first and final reading to connect, to collect any additional feedback on this rule. I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Are there any questions on this item? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve? Mr. Cobbins provides the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Holt provides the second. No discussion, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Item 2C, yours again.
Okay, up again. Last one. Again, Angie Sanders, General Counsel for the Board, presenting to you on first reading revisions to special courses policy 3.201. State Board of Education rule and this policy allow local education agencies the ability to apply to offer special courses that are not listed in the State Board of Education's Approved High School Courses Policy 3.205. The Department of Education annually reviews special course applications and recommends them to the State Board for approval. There's actually a few on your agenda later today. This item presents revisions to the policy to clarify the process for a public charter school to submit a request for course approval. Previously, the rule, or the policy, required that they submit those requests through their LEA, and we have heard from charter schools that that can sometimes be a barrier. So what this does now is allow them to submit an application for a special course directly to the department, but they will still have to provide notice to their authorizer of the request, so that their authorizer is aware of their intent to apply for approval of the course. In addition, we have removed language that was designated for removal back in 2017, but has not been removed, so we are also cleaning that piece up. Happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Are there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Holt.
Ms. Sanders, I assume there's an infrastructure in place at the department to field these requests?
That's correct. Yes, they have an office, and they can probably speak a little bit better than I could as to their process, but that reviews these requests on an annual basis.
Okay. And do they review them from, I guess, LEAs in school districts?
That's correct. Currently, they come directly from LEAs. This will allow charter schools to apply directly as well.
Great. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item?
I so move.
Mr. Eby provides the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Morrow, or there are actually two people at one time. Mr. Morrow will go with you. Mr. Morrow provides the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great work. Item 2D, Uniform Grading System Permanent Rule. Ms. Catherine Johnson.
Hello, Madam Chair and members. Catherine Johnson, Deputy Director of Academic Policy for the State Board of Education. This is actually the first of four items that are all related to the same topic. The other three will come on final reading. This past legislative session, the legislature passed Public Chapter 1080, which requires the State Board of Education to develop a 10-point grading scale for students in grades nine to 12. And LEAs may also adopt this for students in grades K through eight. This does not prohibit an LEA from developing, adopting, or implementing a local grading system for the purposes other than reporting students' grades for post-secondary financial assistance. This is the same structure that we currently have under our seven-point grading scale. This is to update the Uniform Grading System Permanent Rule 520-02-03-02, to develop that 10-point grading scale. This will go into effect in the 2022-23 school year. Therefore, we also will have a very similar emergency rule on final reading this meeting to consider. I'm happy to answer any questions related to this item.
Questions for Ms. Johnson? Mr. Darnell?
I know part of this new rule allows for systems to be consistent in all grades. So our system is one of those that has decided to go from elementary through high school, just for consistency's sake. Do you, from the feedback that you've heard so far, is that pretty consistent across the state? Are many systems choosing to do that, or do you see, you know, a break where it's high school only and not the lower grades?
Just as we see consistency under the current seven-point grading scale that was in place up until this past school year, where it was optional in K through eight, but most districts chose to still implement that seven-point grading scale, we anticipate the same will be when they transition to this 10-point grading scale for that consistency.
Mr. Eby?
Yeah, sort of following up on Mr. Darnell's question with regard to consistency, because some K through eight, et cetera, would be 93 to 100, and others are 90 to 100. When a student moves from one school system to the other, do the, does the district that they're leaving provide what their grade scale is, so that, again, when the student comes over, there's some consistency in assessing of what an A was for that student?
Yes, usually transcripts do provide the information on the grading scale. So just as currently, districts can implement their own grading systems under our seven-point grading scale, the same will be under the 10-point grading scale, and those decisions are at the local LEA discretion for how they will transition those grades from one district to another.
Not saying we do it here today or this year or whatever, is that something that we might want to put in policy down the road to encourage districts to provide what their grading scale is when a student moves from?
It is definitely something we can consider adding, to just say that districts must provide information on what their local grading scale is.
Thank you.
Question?
Yes, Mr. Morrow.
Sort of a curiosity on how necessarily to address it, but so if, to follow up on Bob's question, so if a student's transferring from one district to another district, and they have a 92, all right, how is that looked at in calculating grade point averages? Because, you know, when you, and here it talks about financial assistance, looking at colleges, HOPE scholarships, and, you know, a B would have a different weight in the GPA than an A, and so a 92 in one district being a B, a 92 being an A in another district, like, how does that work?
Yeah, so--
In the calculation of GPA.
Yeah, in terms of, like, their local GPA, if the district or LEA chooses to implement a local grading scale, that is up to them to determine whether they're going to do a direct change or, like, modify it. In terms of, like, the HOPE scholarship, the whole point of having this grading, 10-point grading scale dictated by the State Board is, in addition to a local grading scale, they, all districts and LEAs must calculate the students' grades according to this 10-point grading scale, which is what is submitted for HOPE scholarship and other state-level post-secondary financial assistance. So if, let's say, an LEA wanted to keep their seven-point grading scale as their local grading scale, the student would have one transcript based on the seven-point grading scale, and a second transcript that goes to the state based on the 10-point grading scale. However, like we, like I said, we anticipate that just as most state, most LEAs use a seven-point grading scale, they will just adopt it and change to a 10-point grading scale for their local grading scale, as well as the statewide grading scale. Does that make sense? Okay.
It's a lot of work to keep two separate--
Yeah. So that's why I said, we do anticipate that--
So the incentive in this is, hey, let's all get this--
Yeah, and we actually have already been receiving questions from LEAs on, like, when is this going into effect? We want to change our local policies to a 10-point grading scale, et cetera. So we do know that districts are already thinking about that and working on their own local policies to adapt.
In doing that, has there been any, this is, I guess, another curiosity, just in looking at, you know, whether it's a seven point or a 10 points. You got 10 points to be able to get an A, 10 points to be able to get a B, 10 points to be able to get a C, 10 points to be able to get a D, and 60 points to be able to get an F.
Yeah.
Like, just looking at, like, you know, sort of standard deviations of how much you have, and looking at standards-based grading, and was there a discussion around that, if we're going to make a change, just kind of look at the whole thing philosophically, or is this just trying to get some uniformity for financial assistance, looking at colleges?
So, like I said, we did already have uniformity. It was just a seven-point grading scale. This did come from the state legislature. I would say, on average, the most common grading scale used across the nation is a 10-point grading scale. And so I think a big desire was to actually get Tennessee in line with what the national norm is, so that if students are moving from another state into Tennessee, it's actually easier to move transcripts and things like that without having to adjust the grading scales. So I think it was an effort to actually move us to the national norm, which is a 10-point grading scale.
So--
But I don't, I don't know what the legislature discussed, if they went into the philosophy of all of that.
I was just saying, you could do a 50, do a 59, and you still have an F, and it's, but to, from, like, thinking from a kid's perspective, if we're talking grading scales, you get a 2, that's a long way to recover, to get back to a 60.
Yeah. I do know, like I said, from my experience as a former teacher, Metro Nashville did say, in, like, the first three quarters, the lowest grade you could get was a 50. So local districts can implement those sort of policies for their local grading scale, but for the statewide grading scale that goes to the HOPE scholarship, there are no caveats like that. If you earn a 2%, you get a 2%.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yep.
And I think Nathan does want to add some additional background to this whole topic.
Yeah, Madam Chairman and members, this is a bill that had come up several times in the legislature. Mostly, it centered around the delegation from Montgomery County, because what you have, you know, one of the institutions that's attached to us is the Military Interstate Compact, and that seeks to look after kids whose parents are transferred a lot. But the folks from Montgomery County have been especially concerned about this, because all the states around us have this 10-point scale. And so folks would transfer in when, you know, mom or dad got transferred into Fort Campbell especially. And so that's where the impetus of this came from, and this year, it carried the majority in both houses, so.
Thank you for that, Nathan. And I do want to call on Mr. Wells.
Well--
And then Mr. Eby.
We just touched on the two comments I was going to make. I was about getting a little closer to the national norm, and then with my experience working with military families, this is something that is definitely a struggle for them, and I think if we can do anything, we can do to help those families when they have to move, to make that move, a transition as easy as possible. So both of mine were covered. Thank you.
Mr. Eby?
Yeah, and finally, so when somebody comes in from another state, are they required to provide what their grading scale is when they come in?
Yes, once again, I do believe it is the norm for all transcripts to say what that LEA district, state's grading scale is. That is a, that's a norm for transcripts.
Mr. Mullenhour?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to highlight briefly the comments that Nathan James just made, and underscore the fact that his role is critical, in the same way that so many people on our staff interface with other agencies, other departments, and also the legislature. Being able to get that kind of rich context quickly to make sure that the work that we're doing here is aligned with the intent of the legislature is just, is very critical. And just wanted to thank you for those comments, Nathan.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve Item 2D? Was that Mr. Wells? We have a motion for Mr. Wells. Is there a second? Mr. Cobbins provides the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item, 2E, Educator Licenseur Rule, Mr. Jack Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jack Powers, Director of Policy at the Department of Education. I'm here to present revisions to the Educator Licenseur Rule on first reading, specifically revisions pursuant to three public chapters from the past 2022 legislative session. The first, Public Chapter 1090-- The first, Public Chapter 1093, this created a limited license pathway for educators who have been previously employed on a temporary permit. The second, Chapter, Public Chapter 932, this provided some additional increased flexibilities for the granting of temporary teaching permits and subject area teaching endorsements. And then finally, revisions pursuant to Public Chapter 692 to expand the type of qualifying experiences that an individual can have when applying from out-of-state for an in-state instructional leader license. I will point out and not go through them in detail, though, but happy to answer questions. There were also some revisions made here just to kind of improve clarity into the rule and address some omissions and bring certain sections into alignment with common practice. And with that, I stand ready to take any questions that board members may have.
Question for Mr. Powers. Hearing none, and Jack has a surprised look on his face. I can't help it, I'm staring right at him. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Okay, was that Mr.?
Nate Morrow. Nate Morrow, so moved.
Thank you, they're sitting right next to each other. Mr. Morrow provides the motion, is there a second? I heard Mr. Holt. Mr. Holt provides a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item is F, Graduation Requirements. Ms. Debrinol?
Good morning, I am Debrinol, Assistant Commissioner for the Division of CCTE at the Tennessee Department of Education. Tennessee State Board of Education Graduation Requirements Rule 05200103.06 outlines the graduation requirements for the students in Tennessee. This rule outlines diploma options for high school students, example, traditional, special education, occupational, and alternate academic high school diploma, and specific credit requirements needed to earn each diploma type. Chapter 979 of the Public Acts of 2022, PC 979, expanded access to computer science education to ensure elementary, middle, and high school students are prepared for evolving workforce needs. In addition to require computer science coursework, department-provided professional development, and a new computer science endorsement pathway for educators, PC 979 requires students to complete at least one credit of computer science to receive a traditional high school diploma. This item adds this requirement to the Graduation Requirements Rule specifying that students may fulfill the computer science requirement either through their fourth credit of math, third credit of science, or elective focus credit. This graduation requirement applies to students who enroll in ninth grade in the 24-25 school year and each school year thereafter. Additionally, Chapter 946 of the Public Acts of 2022, PC 946, requires the State Board of Education to establish requirements for students to receive an industry 4.0 diploma distinction beginning in the 22-23 school year. The industry 4.0 diploma distinction is ideal for students interested in pursuing a career in a high-need, high-skilled industry. For a student to receive a distinction, the student must participate in monthly career counseling and enroll in work-based learning or dual enrollment coursework in their eleventh and twelfth grade year. This item adds an industry 4.0 diploma distinction requirement to this rule. Lastly, this item moves all other requirements for local and state graduation distinctions to the rule from the State Board's High School Policy 2.103 in order to ensure compliance with TCA 4-5-102 regarding what must be contained in an agency rule rather than policy. State Board staff will conduct a rulemaking hearing between the first and final reading to collect public feedback. The Department of Education recommends approval of this item on first reading. The State Board staff concurs with this recommendation. Thank you for your time this morning, and at this time, I would be happy to address any questions.
Questions or comments for Ms. Noel? Mr. Eby?
I'm certainly glad to see the computer science can now count as one of the math credits. I will make this statement as I always do. I hope at some point in time we'll be able to substitute that fourth year of math with an engineering class or something else that has comparable math activities in it. So just, to pass that on to T, I know Victoria's working that too, so, but, thank you, well done.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead. No, please.
Just, just a question. I think with, you know, where the, where the world's going, this is, this is the right move, and maybe this is a good question for Victoria, but any concerns that if our students start doing this, there's a drop in ACT scores or college readiness or anything like that?
No, not from our side. And now that we've heard from higher ed, the content that they would be looking at for the ACT would have been covered in that science reasoning portion already. But I know higher ed is very excited to have students coming in with those more competent in computer science, as we see both from the skills it takes to be a successful college student, as well as the fields that we are hoping students continue to engage in.
I do also, I want to add that I have had industry advocates, industry leaders pushing for the four point, oh, is it four point O?
Yes.
Industry certification or distinction of diploma-
Diploma distinction, yes.
Diploma of distinction-
Yes.
Have been pushing that for quite some time, a number of years. And so I know they will be thrilled to see this added into this particular rule. So thank you for that. Other questions or comments?
Just one comment, Madam Chair. Just want to publicly acknowledge the work of a gentleman from Memphis, Meka Igueke, who runs an organization called Code Crew. And this computer science requirement, I believe is a result of a lot of his hard work over the past couple of years and working with the department to bring that to fruition. So I just wanted to make sure he got some acknowledgement. Thank you.
Very good. Other comments? Questions?
Yes, so, just, I would love to, you're probably gonna need to do some collaboration with the Office of Nonpublic in this as well. So when we're talking graduation requirements and then the rules proposed for the non-public schools, part of those accrediting agencies that will be overseen are gonna have requirements to follow the state's graduation requirements. And so just as we're looking at, I wanna just, these can apply to that too, based on how those readings are, and I'm not sure any of the non-public schools know that this is even a conversation maybe. So just as a part of the feedback loop, we would want to include these graduation requirement changes for feedback as well. Not that there's necessarily something wrong with them, but I, I think that we don't want to surprise anybody either.
Very good. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Mr. Eby provides the motion, is there a second? Mr. Wells provides a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item is G. Evaluations, Ms. Martha Moore.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. I am Martha Moore, Senior Director of Educator Effectiveness with the Department of Education. Thank you for having me this morning. Tennessee Code Annotated 491302-D2B provides the Level of Effectiveness Score Component Percentage Weighting for Tested Teachers and teachers assessed by student growth portfolios or alternative growth measures. Educator Evaluation Rule 0520-02-01.02 outlines the requirements for educator evaluation, including the LOE Score Component Percentage Weighting for Tested Teachers. This item revises the educator evaluation rule to align the rule with statutory changes from Public Chapter 991 and Public Chapter 1096 of the 112th General Assembly. Chapter 991 of the Public Acts of 2022 amended TCA 491302-D2B and changes the LOE Score Component Percentage Weightings for Tested Teachers and teachers assessed by student growth portfolios or alternative growth measures as follows in the table below. You can see that the achievement scores have shifted by ten percent, a ten percent increase, and observation scores have shifted by a ten percent decrease. Additionally, Chapter 1096 amends TCA 491302 by adding a new subdivision to the law, allowing a tested teacher's LOE score to be comprised of fifteen percent student achievement data and eighty-five percent observation score if the teacher does not have access to individual growth data due to changes in academic standards or assessment design requiring standards validation or standard setting in the teacher's current evaluation year. The State Board staff will conduct a rulemaking hearing between first and final read to collect public feedback. The Department of Education recommends approval of this item on first reading, and the State Board staff concurs. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there questions? Mr. Holt?
Just to ensure I understand, the, the new percentages, those come directly from the statute?
They come directly from the statute.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Is there a motion to approve this item? Mr. Cobbins provides the motion, is there a second? Mr. Holt provides a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item is H, Individualized Education Accounts, Robin Yeay.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
I am presenting to the Board on first reading revisions to the Individualized Education Account Rules, Sections .02, .04, .06, and .08. The IEA program is a school choice program for eligible students with disabilities. It was created through the Individualized Education Act, and these state board rules effectuate the act and guide administration of the program. This item proposes four changes to the rules. First, the rule is amended to add specific learning disability as a qualifying disability for the program to align with recently passed legislation. Second, the revisions change from August 1st to July 1st, the date by which a student must notify the LEA in which they reside of their intent to enroll in the program. The current rule requires students to notify the LEA of their intent to enroll before entering into a contract with the IEA program. And at the time the rule was originally promulgated, the contract began on August 1st, but in order to align better with the department's fiscal year, the IA contract now begins on July 1st, meaning the date by which a student must notify their LEA of intent to enroll must also be changed to July 1st. Third, the rule is amended to permit educational therapies to be, to be provided by a licensed therapy assistant under the direct supervision of a licensed therapist. Educational therapies are often provided by licensed therapy assistants, and this revision adds flexibility for IEA participants. And lastly, the rule cleans up references to the BEP to reflect the transition to TESA starting in the 23-24 school year. State Board staff will conduct a rulemaking hearing between first and final reading to collect public feedback, and the Department recommends acceptance of this item on first reading, and State Board staff concur, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions? Mr. Cobbins?
On the date change for the deadline, have families had any sort of input or, or discussion in that change?
I believe that our IEA program team has been notifying and working with participants to notify them of that date change. The change was really spurred by just a, kind of an administratively easier way to administer the contract to align better with other department contracts and with the fiscal year.
And that doesn't affect anyone this school year?
No.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item? Mr. Cob, oh, do you have another question?
Well, just a request. I guess between now and final reading, can we get some report on the usage rate of IEAs?
The participation rate?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Yes, we can definitely do that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve this item? The minute I look away. Who made the motion, I'm sorry? Mr. Darnell provides the motion, and I believe Mr. Cobbins provide the second. Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item is J. Course Access Program Rule, Mr. Jack Powers? We're skipping that one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jack Powers with the Department of Education. So the Course Access Program Rule, we're bringing revisions to this on first reading, basically just to bring this rule into alignment with Public Chapter 929 from the 22 legislative session. Specifically, that Public Chapter required some revisions to broaden the definition of course provider under the Course Access Program law, and additionally required the inclusion of extended learning opportunities into the rule. And we also went through and made some kind of clerical edits to take out references to the Basic Education Program, of course, following the passage of TESA. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions that board members may have.
Are there any questions? Questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Mr. Eby provides the motion, is there a second?
Second, Nate.
Mr., thank you, Nate. All in favor, say aye? The ayes have it, I'm getting ahead of myself. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item is K. Career and Technical Education Course Standards. Sarah Williams?
Good morning, Chairman and Board. My name is Sarah Williams, Senior Director for Career and Technical Education for the Board, or for the Department of Education. Happy to come to you this morning. STCA 491302-A8 authorizes the Board to set policies governing all academic courses and standards of courses of study in public schools. Additionally, State Board Rule 5200103.051 calls for the State Board to adopt standards for each subject area, grades K through 12. The approved standards are on the basis for planning instructional programs in each local school system. We are bringing before you new and revised courses for the following CTE career clusters. As the Board knows, we review about a third of our courses each year. That's why there are fifty-nine that I appreciate you looking through. Those career clusters for this year are agricultural, food, natural resources, finance, health science, hospitality, and tourism, STEM, and transportation. The high school CTE courses format has been updated based upon educator feedback for ease of use and to align more closely with competency-based industry and post-secondary standards. These new and revised standards have been reviewed by industry, secondary, and post-secondary partners. Additional feedback will be solicited between first and final reading. We have an open comment period of about thirty days that we'll send out through our CTE educator newsletter to gather that feedback. Pursuant to 491309, the State Board will submit the proposed changes to the Education Committees of the House and Senate prior to final reading. The CTE course standards and changes will go into effect for the 2023-24 school year. I would be happy to highlight each one of the changes for the fifty-nine courses, but I will leave that to your request, as I know you have, you have been able to review and have already provided some feedback. The recommendation from the Department of Education is to accept this item on first reading. The SBE staff concurs with the recommendation. So at this time, I'll take any questions you may have.
Mr. Darnell?
Just a comment, a couple comments. I just appreciate the way that you have worked and the department works with so many different stakeholders. One of the key components to making sure that these standards are successful are that educators know what it is that they're supposed to teach. And I've heard some really good feedback. I know your conference was this past week, your state conference, Chattanooga, I think that's right.
Yeah, we just wrapped yesterday.
So lots of good feedback from that, and that people are leaving well-educated in what's to come and, and the, the ever-changing CTE world. So just, just some comments.
Thank you.
Some positive feedback.
Other comments? Mr. Eby?
I just want to follow on to what Nick was saying too, about the evolving classes. I really enjoyed reading about the STEM classes, the engineering classes, and, you know, whether you're from automotive to unmanned, basically drones. I just encourage the districts to do whatever they can to provide the opportunities for the students to take these, these classes, because they're- the students to take these classes because they're great opportunities, thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to add that I certainly appreciate the great work that went into this and the way that you laid it out for us. It is a lot for us to absorb, but I always think about the amount of work that went into getting it to the point where we could review them as easily as possible. So thank you so much for that. I do want to make a public comment about something that I did share and I did receive some feedback. On Accounting I and in Banking and Finance, there's a title change whereby professionalism is included and the interpretation of what professionalism is to someone who's in banking, formerly a banker, not an accountant, but I think just begs for some more information with regard to teaching students about what professionalism means. And so I would certainly help with providing some language on that between first and second reading.
Okay.
But I would certainly advocate for adding more definition behind and examples of professionalism.
Absolutely, happy to.
Thank you. Other questions, Mr. Cobbins?
One question from Mr. Jensen, who couldn't be here today. He asked, on CTE in general, Public Chapter 884 this year requires our Tennessee College of Applied Technology to expand partnerships to include all LEAs in their service area. What process will the department use to incentivize those partnerships through CTE funding? From a funding standpoint, will the CTE programs developed with the TCATs be treated any differently than those developed exclusively by the LEA?
That is a great question. I feel like the governor's investment in innovative school models, specifically through CTE, and there's a piece of that around partnerships, and I think TCATs are primed for that. I know a lot of our districts are heavily connected with TCATs. It seems like where they are, it's a deep and rich connection, but definitely we have some pockets of the state where we could continue to partner with TBR to grow that. TBR does also receive a portion of our state allocation for Perkins funding. That also helps incentivize those partnerships. And then lastly, through THEC, and I may need a little support on this one, is the Give and the Spark Grants help encourage those partnerships through providing funding to the post-secondary partner to partner with a secondary partner. Is that a fair statement? Okay.
Yep. Other questions or comments? Mr. Mullenhour?
I just wanted to echo previous comments. This is very, very important work and has direct implications on the lives of many, many people. And I imagine that it's an exciting time for you because our state has seen fit to invest heavily in this area. And I just appreciate your leadership and appreciate you setting the stage for success in this way. And again, I, without belaboring the point, all of us here are just grateful for the work that you're doing in this field. I do think that there's, you know, with TESA coming into play and with the new funding formula, it will be important that we continue to improve the process. Even if we get it great today, there's still going to be adjustments that are necessary and we're in good hands with you at the helm, thank you.
Thank you. One thing that's consistent, it's change in CTE, so as long as we're prepared for that, we're good to go.
Excellent. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Morrow provides the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Darnell provides the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your great work. The next item is N., Interscholastic Athletics Rule, Ms. Chandraia?
Hersi.
I'm always afraid that I am going to mess up your name.
Madam Chair, is our next item, my understanding is item N. as in Nancy was removed? Was that N. as in mother?
That was one of the ones removed, yes.
I thought I heard you announce N., Interscholastic Athletics Rule was the next item on the agenda?
I'm pretty sure the next item, so we just had K., we're skipping L. and M., and N. is next on the agenda.
Okay, got it. I misunderstood, thank you.
You're welcome, sure. Please proceed, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Chandraia Hersi, Staff Attorney for the Tennessee Department of Education. I'm here to present the Interscholastic Athletics Rule on first reading. Tennessee Code Annotated 496310 requires LEAs adopt and enforce policies to ensure students' gender for the purpose of participation in public middle school or high school interscholastic athletic activities or events be determined by the student's sex at the time of the student's birth as indicated on the student's original birth certificate. Chapter 909 of the Public Chapters of 2022 amended TCA 496310 to require the Commissioner of Education withhold a portion of state education financial, I'm sorry, state education finance funds from the LEA, from an LEA that fails or refuses to comply with TCA 496310A. Public Chapter 909 also requires the State Board to promulgate rules to ensure compliance with law and to establish a procedure governing the Commissioner's process for withholding state funds due to non-compliance. This item creates a new interscholastic athletics rule to outline these procedures. The State Board staff will conduct a rulemaking hearing between first and final reading to collect public comment and the Department of Education recommends acceptance of this rule on first reading and the State Board of Education staff concurs with that recommendation. Again, thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Eby?
Yes, thank you. What kind of structure are you looking at about the process of withholding funds? I mean, can you, how will they decide that or where is that structure going to be put into place?
So, with what we have here in the rule, the structure is not specifically outlined because we want to ensure that the Commissioner has discretion to withhold funds that are appropriate, is an appropriate amount that reflects the actual conduct at the time, so it's not specifically outlining the rule at this point.
So it'll just be the Commissioner's decision?
At the Commissioner's discretion, yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Holt?
As I read the subsection, which I believe Mr. Eby was referencing, would it be worth clarifying that it is the Commissioner's decision as to the amount? Because I read it as just saying the Commissioner shall withhold a portion of the state education finance funds. And it also wasn't clear to me who makes the decision on the amount, which seems like if this were to happen, would be an important decision. So maybe clarity in the rule on that could be helpful.
No, we could definitely consider that between first and final reading.
Thank you.
Just-
Yes, Mr. Morrow?
And just in doing that, I'm just thinking through, there is, there may be intentional offense, maybe unintentional offense. I mean, you have students transferring, transit populations, records taken in, and so I just think, looking at, you know, sort of how to scale this withholding based on severity and sort of relative to the district itself or the LEA. Again, you know, looking at the diversity of types of school, what a blanket penalty or withholding might mean for one district could be very, very different for another district. So if you were to, you know, take a Houston County and a Davidson County and there was a blanket fee, then that's going to be completely inequitable based on capacity. And so just consideration of what that would look like in percentage to overall budget or students or some sort of metric to be able to evaluate that with equity among the different schools. And then my other question just was, has there been partnership with the Tennessee, the TWSAA in this? As the, like, has there been conversations with the TWSAA on this as we're working through? Who is sort of the administrative body for athletics?
At this point, we haven't received any input from the TWSAA, but we are open to collaborating with them to make adjustments to the rule between first and final reading.
Okay. Thank you. So, but just, they have not reached out yet to talk through this with you?
No, they haven't.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Other questions or comments, Mr. Cobbins?
Is there, is there any pending litigation of any kind related to this?
There is pending litigation related to TCA 496310, but for this specific statute that was implemented or that was brought into place during the past legislative session, there is no pending legislation related to the Commissioner's action to withhold funds.
Is there a follow-up, Mr. Cobbins?
Yes, ma'am. Are there, I guess, I guess my big question is, is this, is any of this, is all of this in alignment with federal laws? Or do we know?
At this time, because of the pending litigation, I'm unable to provide a response for that question.
Okay.
Mr. Mullenhour? You withdraw? Thank you. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item? Mr. Wells provides the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mullenhour provides the second, any discussion, further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Where you heading?
What? Did I?
There's a motion and a second, just need to vote.
That's what I was, oh, sorry. I thought I did that. Ooh, get confused here every now and then. So, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
We have one opposition. The motion is approved. The majority are in favor, so the motion is passed. Thank you. The next item is item, thank you so much. The next item is 2O, Science Standards, Catherine Johnson.
Hello, Catherine Johnson, Deputy Director of Academic Policy for the State Board of Education. I am here to present the Tennessee Academic Standards for Science as proposed by the Standards Recommendation Committee. TCA 49-1-3112313 sets the process for our comprehensive and transparent review of Tennessee academic standards. Each of the four main subjects is done on a six-year cycle. In summer 2021, the State Board began the review of science standards in compliance with all laws and policies. And in June 2022, the Standards Recommendation Committee met to finalize the proposed revisions to the science standards as presented to you today. Some of the major changes that were made to the standards over the course of this process were was adding clarifying language to K-8 standards, particularly in parenthetical statements, saying whether it was an all-inclusive statement or a exemplar statement. We also ensured alignment to research best practices for science education in K-8 as well as specifically Chemistry 1 and 2 and Biology 1 and 2 at the high school level. And then finally, we split Physics into two courses to better reflect what is feasible to teach in a single course. This split was modeled after the divide of content found in the AP Physics courses. The State Board staff recommends acceptance of this item on first reading and I am happy to answer any questions the Board may have.
Are there any questions? Mr. Eby?
Thank you. Clearly, the review committees that review these courses spend quite a bit of effort. And in this, we actually got some recommendations from them in going forward, some of the challenges that they had and some recommendations on how you, we ought to work with the teachers to train them to do a better job. What are we doing with regard to those recommendations and moving those forward or at least listening to those and thinking about those the next time we go through the, going through the social studies standards now?
Yeah, I can highlight some of their pieces of feedback and the changes we have already implemented as we have already begun our review of the social studies standards. So one of their big pieces of feedback is they were disappointed in the amount of public feedback that the science standards received in the public surveys. They received about 30,000 individual comments on the public feedback surveys for science. I am happy to announce that our communications coordinator and I really partnered to make sure the social studies survey was shared as widely as possible. And I'm happy to report that on the first public feedback survey for social studies, we received about 115,000 comments. So quite a difference and we are hopeful that as we continue to implement those new processes that we did for social studies in future reviews, we will continue to see those high numbers. In terms of the Standards Recommendation Committee feeling prepared, we did take that seriously and I have worked with the leadership team of the State Board to brainstorm some ideas of how to better prepare the upcoming Standards Recommendation Committees for future reviews. We have extended the timeline from when we first request the appointments to when they actually meet so that we can have additional pre-meetings with them to provide more of that background information they need ahead of time before they actually meet in person to review the proposed standards. So those are the two big pieces of feedback we received and what we have done to, in response to those.
Thank you for addressing those. And again, we do provide the opportunity for constituents to provide comments and we respond to those comments and so encourage people to do that. And here we are, setting the standards, whether it's in science or social studies or math or English. And we do encourage constituents to put in comments and thank you for the efforts that you do and communications, Elizabeth and all, to make that happen.
Absolutely.
One thing that I want to add to that is, is my understanding that it's fairly normal for the science standards process to garner less feedback than the other standards. Is that a valid statement?
That is correct. So all of the four core subjects have gone through a review previously between about 2015 and 2018. And science in that round did also receive the least number of responses. We believe some of that is just the comfortability of the public with the content versus some of the other subjects that the public may interact with on a more regular basis versus science.
Thank you, thank you for that. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Mr. Eby provides the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Holt provides the second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to move into the items on final reading, beginning with 3A, Board Member Policy, Ms. Angie Sanders.
Good morning again, Madam Chair and members. Angie Sanders, General Counsel for the State Board of Education, presenting to you all on final reading, Revisions to the Board Member's Policy. This policy, 1.200, sets forth additional detail regarding the composition of the Board, including the method of election of officers of the Board, new member orientation, and conflicts of interest. This policy was last updated in 2018. Revisions are proposed to remove outdated or duplicative language regarding appointments and qualifications of members and to add further detail and clarity to the section of conflicts of interest and disclosure statements. In preparing these revisions, Board staff consulted with other agencies and organizations and reviewed codes of ethics and conflict of interest policies of similar state boards and commissions, as well as policies adopted by local boards of education. Additional edits were made in alignment with legislation passed during this session regarding the appointment of Board members and allowing the Executive Director of THAC to appoint a designee in her stead. Since first reading, edits were made to the section on personal interests to define immediate family as a Board member's spouse and child living in the same household. Edits were also made to the direct interest definition to prohibit contracts between a Board member and a Board member or their spouse. A provision was also added directing all questions regarding the disclosure statement forms or the conflict policy more generally to the General Counsel. And other edits were made just for clarity and consistency. And I do want to thank our Board Member Jordan Mullenhour, he's worked with me closely between first and final reading and I think that these edits reflect hopefully a good place on this. So, thank you to him and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Very good, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Mullenhour?
Madam Chair, just mutually thank you for the time you put into this. I know that you did a lot of research, you looked at a lot of other policies across departments and tried to make sure that we were calibrated, thoughtful, and deliberate in the choice of words and just committing for your work, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Mr. Mullenhour provides the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Morrow provides the second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Thank you very much. The next item is three B, Educator License or Denial, Formal Reproman, Suspension and Revocation Rule, Mr. Todd Madison.
Good morning, members. Todd Madison, Staff Attorney for the Board, presenting on final reading revisions to State Board Rule zero five two zero dash zero two dash zero three dash point zero nine, which governs the denial, formal reprimand, suspension, and revocation of a Tennessee educator license, and denial of a temporary permit application. Revisions to this rule create a new category of offenses that are subject to disciplinary action to include misdemeanor convictions where the victim is a minor or a student. The addition of such convictions helps to prevent individuals from avoiding licensure action by pleading guilty to a lesser charge in situations where the victim is a student or a minor. Additionally, revisions were made to create a process for the board to take action when educators agree to surrender their license as part of a plea agreement, court order, or settlement in illegal action. Additional changes were made throughout the rule for clarity and consistency. One notable clarification is clarifying that educators are subject to automatic permanent revocation if their criminal conviction includes a judicial diversion plea to an offense that is not eligible for expungement. One substantive edit was made between first and final reading to include students as possible victims of misdemeanor offenses, in addition to minors. Other non-substantive evidence, other non-substantive edits were made for clarity. A rulemaking hearing, hearing was held on July sixth, twenty twenty-two, no public comments were submitted regarding this rule. State Board staff recommends approval of this item on final reading.
Are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Mr. Holt provides the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Robbins provides a second, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, this is a roll call item, because it is a rule, I call on Mr. Casey Griffin to call the roll.
Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Darnell?
Aye.
Mr. Eby?
Aye.
Mr. Holt?
Aye.
Mr. Jensen? Mr. Mullenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Morrow?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Madam Chairman?
Aye.
Madam Chairman, you have eight ayes.
The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Thank you, Mr. Madison. The next item is item three C, repeal English as a second language, Catherine Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Catherine Johnson, Deputy, Deputy Director of Academic Policy with the State Board of Education. I am here to recommend the repeal of the English as a second language program policy three point two oh seven. Public Chapter nine twenty-nine of two thousand and eighteen changed the criteria for what types of requirements needed to be in rule versus policy. Since then, the, all of this policy has been moved into rule as it affects a third party. In order to ensure that we do not have duplicative information, which can become confusing, we recommend the repeal of this item on final reading.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Mr. Darnell provides the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Holt provides a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Thank you very much. Item D?
Thank you. Catherine Johnson, Deputy Director with the State Board of Education. The next two items are both around statewide dual credit courses. The State Board of Education, in collaboration with the Tennessee Board of Regents, under state statute, works to approve statewide dual credit courses, which are college-level courses taught by high school teachers at a local LEA or district. These courses grant students the opportunity to early post-secondary opportunities and credit if the student passes the challenge exam at the end of the course. The standards for these courses are created and revised by a committee of higher education faculty, and then approved by the State Board of Education. The sociology course has been a course that is, has previously and is currently offered. However, under new state statute on prohibited concepts, we sent these standards back to TBR and the panel of higher education faculty members to create revisions to these standards to ensure that LEAs and the teachers teaching these courses would not run afoul of the new public statute on prohibited concepts. We respect the knowledge of the state, of the higher ed faculty on what makes up a college-level sociology course. However, they were unable to make revisions to this course to ensure compliance of our high school teachers. Therefore, the State Board recommends that we deny approval of the sociology statewide dual credit course on final reading.
Are there any questions or comments regarding this item?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Mullenhour.
Thank you. A few thoughts, and this is going to be a little bit of a repeat from this item on first reading, but I appreciate the diplomacy, Catherine, by which you've explained the State Board staff's position. I'm speaking for myself in saying this. They, they weren't unable to make changes, they chose to not make changes, and I think it's important that we are reminded that the legislature has spoken on this topic. Law was passed, the prohibited concepts statute. Ample opportunity was given to the Board of Regents to make the changes that would have brought that, that course into compliance, and they chose not to. And I think we need to, I, you know, I, I too appreciate the work that the Board of Regents does, there, there are so many courses that we are able to approve in collaboration with that team to bring these, these courses to bear for our students. And I do not understand why this panel would choose to not allow a sociology, this particular sociology course, to be offered as a dual credit course, because they're trying to make a political point. And I would strongly encourage and ask that the Board of Regents have whatever conversations are necessary with that panel, so that we can bring this course once again before the board, and so that we can make it available to the students. I think that they should be held to account, and also that we should be very, very careful anytime we put any kind of course before educators that would essentially ask them to, or require them to break the law in order to teach that course, and that's exactly what happened in this particular instance. So, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Mr. Mullenhour provides the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Eby provides a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Thank you, you have the next item?
Yes. Under this process of Tennessee Board of Regents reviewing several of the statewide dual credit courses, they also made updates and revisions to five existing courses and two new courses. The existing courses include statewide dual credit introduction to criminal justice, introductory statistics, introduction to agriculture business, introduction to psychology, and speech and communications. The two new courses include principles of marketing and introduction to education. These two new courses will be embedded into their respective CTE programs of study. The State Board staff recommends approval of these courses on final reading.
Questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Eby?
Just trying to understand, we call these standards, and yet, in the listing, it calls it, calls them learning objectives.
Yes, so at the higher ed level, they do call them learning objectives. They, learning objectives are very similar, if not identical, to what standards are at the K twelve level, just different terms used at different levels of education.
Thank you, I was just trying to understand the difference.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Mr. Eby provides the motion, is there a second? Mr. Wells provides a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item is F, Teaching as a Profession, Dr. Lisa Coons.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here for the final reading of the Teaching as a Profession and Foundational Literacy Course standards. TCA forty-nine one three oh two authorizes the State Board of Education to set policies governing all academic standards and courses of study in public schools. Additionally, State Board Rule oh five two oh one oh three point oh five calls for the State Board to adopt standards for each subject area grades K twelve. The approved standards are to be the basis of the planning instructional programs in each local school system. The Tennessee Literacy Success Act requires the department to develop a foundational literacy skills instruction course for high school students participating in Teaching as a Profession program of study. Pursuant to TCA forty-nine one nine oh six C, the foundational literacy practice, practicum is a new course that will be offered as a Level Four course for both the Teaching as a Profession and early childhood education careers, programs of study within the education and training career cluster. As we spoke about during the first reading, these were reviewed and coordinated both with the literacy standards, the EPP standards, the Reading three sixty, early reading course, all of those things have been coherently aligned to ensure that all of our pathways for educators have a clear and consistent method for teaching literacy. There are no changes between first and final reading. TCA forty-nine one twelve requires that the department prepare a fiscal analysis, and this item has no fiscal, fiscal impact to an LEA. The Department of Education recommends approval of this item on final reading. The State Board of Education staff concurs with this recommendation.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Mr. Robbins provides the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Morrow provides a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Thank you very much. Next item is G, Approved High School Courses, Catherine Johnson again.
Thank you, Catherine Johnson, Deputy Director of Academic Policy for the State Board of Education. I am here to present the Approved High School Courses Policy three point two oh five. This item updates the high school courses on several different areas. First is to remove the statewide dual credit sociology from the list of approved high school courses. Next, it will add in a couple statewide dual credit courses that we found were missing, even though they were offered, as well as adding the two new statewide dual credit courses that were just mentioned in two items ago. This will also add the Department of Education's proposed new course, Teaching as a Profession Foundational Literacy Practicum. And then finally, the one change from first reading is biology two had inadvertently been deleted from this policy on first reading, so we are just adding that back onto the list. We recommend approval on this, of this item on final reading. Happy to take any questions.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Mr. Darnell provides the motion, is there a second? Mr. Wells provides a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item H, Charter Schools, Mr. Nathan Parker?
Good morning, I'm Nate Parker, Senior Director of Choice for the Tennessee Department of Education. Today, I'm presenting for final reading a revision to State Board Rule zero five two zero dash fourteen dash one dash point oh one regarding the approval of a charter school. This rule outlines the process for a new charter school to apply, I'm sorry, to apply for approval from an authorizer, and provides that an authorizer is not required to review an application that is not complete. An application is deemed complete if it is submitted using the department's charter application form, the application contains all required information, attachments, and signatures, and is accompanied by the application fee if required. The proposed revision to the rule reviewed on first reading addressed two issues for which applications have been deemed incomplete. First was confusion regarding the applicant category type, and second, based on non-material submission requirements such as page numbers. The item proposed revisions to address these issues by first adding a category review procedure to the letter of intent, and also providing a timeline and procedure for the authorizer to determine completeness and to notify the applicant to correct certain deficiencies if possible. Between first and final reading, changes were made. First, based on feedback from the board, we clarified that an authorizer is not required to review a charter sponsor's application if the sponsor does not correct the deficiencies that deem their application incomplete. In addition, we made some minor clerical changes. The Department of Education recommends approval of this item on final reading, to which the State Board staff concurs. At this time, I am happy to address any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions? Mr. Mullenhour?
Madam Chair, thank you. Just a contextual question. How often was it, or, or, how infrequent might it have been for a well-meaning charter applicant to have gone through all the effort of creating an application, and filling out many forms, and providing tremendous amounts of information, only to have the, the authorizer deny that application over something as simple as a page number?
So, we have not had an application denied for that reason, but the issue has come up enough that we wanted to provide that clarification in the rule. And to your point, the applications are over three hundred pages, so when it's something small that can be corrected quickly, we wanted to put that into the rule to provide that opportunity to avoid having to wait an entire year to resubmit the application.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your work on this. Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Holt?
Mr. Parker, could you help me see where in the, the, the rule that the change is made that resolves this issue of providing additional clarity so that a, an applicant can, can, can know what the rules are that makes the application complete or incomplete? And specifically, like the page number example, or any other examples like that?
Sure. So, let's see here. The, in terms of the, the language around completeness, that information is located on, um, letters, on page one, on letter G is where it begins to describe what determines whether or not it's complete. Number two is where language is added for the first reading regarding specifying what sections are required to be in alignment with a completed application. And then underneath I, this is where the procedure is added for, if, if there's an issue with the application that can be fixed, the procedure and the timeline for when that can occur, specifically number two underneath I on page two.
Okay. So, as I read two I, it says that if the sponsor does not correct the deficiencies, the authorizer is not required to review the application. And that's, that's the red line language that I'm seeing.
That is, that is the changes that were made from the first reading to the second reading. If you're referring to the changes that were made on first reading in which we clarify the language around the category type, that language was first introduced in, um, uh, letter C underneath one on page one, where it talks about ensuring the correct application category is selected. In addition, on page two, letter G, number two, that's where it was changed to reference the, that the category indicated by the sponsor in the letter of intent.
Great, thank you, I apologize, I wasn't able to be here for first reading.
No, that's okay, I apologize, I had the red line from the changes for second reading and not the first in front of me.
As, as do I, so, thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Mr. Mullenhauer provides the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Holt provides the second, any further discussion? This item requires a roll call vote, Mr. Casey Griffin or Mr. Nathan James?
Yes ma'am. Mr. Cobbins.
Aye.
Mr. Darnell.
Aye.
Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Holt.
Aye.
Mr. Jensen. Mr. Mullenhauer.
Aye.
Mr. Morrow.
Aye.
Mr. Wells.
Aye.
Madam Chairman Hartgrove.
Aye.
You have eight ayes.
The ayes have it and the motion is approved. At this point, we are going to take a 10-minute break, so hold on, Jack Bowers. 10-minute break, we will be back at 10:41, thank you all very much.
Take a, take a two or three month break.
Just want to alert everyone, we'll get started in less than a minute. Thank you, thank you for being ready. Now, the next item is I, so you're gonna be with, oh, it takes a team of three. Thank you. Okay. Okay, it is now 10:41 and we will reconvene with item I, Academic and Instructional Requirements. I will turn it over to Mr. Jack Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jack Powers, Director of Policy at the Department of Education, and I'm joined by two of my colleagues. To my left, I have Casey Hognorren, she's our Assistant Commissioner of Assessment. And to my right, I have Dr. Lisa Coons, who is our Chief Academic Officer. We are here today to prevent, present on final reading several revisions to the Academic and Instructional Requirements Rule. I want to spend just a moment talking about the main revisions that we're bringing that'll probably take up the bulk of the conversation today. We're proposing revisions that were required by Chapter 1 of the Public Acts of 2021. And PC 1 of 2021 is known as the Tennessee Learning Loss for Mediation and Student Acceleration Act. And so, in addition to outlining various interventions designed to help accelerate student learning, that act also updated the state's third grade retention law. And I do want to read a specific phrase from that law related to retention. It required that, beginning in the 2022-2023 school year, a student in the third grade shall not be promoted to the next grade level unless the student is determined to be proficient in ELA based on the student's achieving a performance level rating of on track or mastered on the ELA portion of the TCAP. More importantly, though, the law also outlined a series of high-quality interventions to prevent a student being retained should that student be identified as below or approaching on the TCAP. And that list of interventions includes retesting on the TCAP, attending a learning loss bridge camp before the beginning of the upcoming school year, demonstrating adequate growth on a pre- and post-test administered during the summer learning camps, or being assigned a tutor through the TNAL Corps, and receiving tutoring for the entirety of the following school year. Importantly, the public chapter also required the State Board to promulgate rules to establish an appeals process that the department will administer if a parent or guardian of a student who's approaching on TCAP and identified for retention based on that designation wishes to appeal that determination. And so, the rules that you have in front of you, that is largely the rulemaking that was needed, was to establish that department-administered appeals process. A lot of what is in here is straight from the law that I, that I just spent time kind of overviewing. So, these revisions must be effective early in the 2022-2023 school year so that promotion and retention decisions that are impactful for students, parents, and families can be made prior to the spring and summer of 2023 and that information is out there and expectations are clear, well in advance leading up to that, that summer. So, between first and second reading, we did make some changes that I want to take a moment to highlight. So, we made an edit, kind of in a separate section of the rule unrelated to retention, for some clarity regarding Category 1, 2, and 3, non-public schools. We also made some revisions to clarify that retention and promotion decisions for students with a disability or a suspected disability that impacts their ability to read, that those promotion and retention decisions must be made on a case-by-case basis in consultation with the student's IEP and/or 504 team. We also made some revisions to actually lengthen the time period that a parent or guardian would have to file an appeal from seven to 14 days. And, and then of course, the time that the department has to, and that was to bring that into alignment with how long the department has to act on the appeal once it's submitted. Finally, I'll mention some edits that were made to requirements for students transferring from certain private schools to public schools to ensure alignment with the current law, and to change the name of the four-year plan of study to the High School and Beyond Plan based on feedback from school counselor stakeholder groups. I do want to also mention, we did receive two public comments on this rule submitted within the public comment period. One was from a Director of Schools, the other, I believe, was from the Tennessee School Boards Association. And happy to kind of, probably with a little bit of help from Angie, speak to their suggestions and what was taken. We took a vast majority of those suggestions made by those comments submitted in that, in that time period. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that board members may have.
Are there any questions, Mr. Eby?
Yes, I've heard from at least two different superintendents and other people and have several questions here. One of the major areas has to do just basically around the timeline and that's been generated. And let me read this one, one case here. So, this is actually for Oak Ridge Schools, the last day of school for students is May the 26th. They start their summer camps June 1st, run June 1st through June 29th. The scores are released to the districts on the 11th of July. Teachers, and they were still embargoed, the teachers return on the 18th of July. Students return for school on the 25th of July, and the TDOE, Public Data Release, is July 25th. So their summer camps run from June 1st to June 29th. And they don't get their TCAP scores until July 11th, so they can't share those, and they can't share those with teachers, with the parents and all till the 25th. But if there's a 10-day requirement, it must be retained and notified either 10 days prior to the start of summer camps. If the school ends on the 26th of May and their summer camps start on June 1st, that's sort of problematic from that standpoint. And then, so, let's talk a little bit about that and then I'll go to some of these others.
Absolutely, and I may have to defer to Casey here, but I will, first of all, I want to call out a couple things because there's kind of a lot to unpack there. The first thing I'll say is that when a district decides to administer their summer programming is quite flexible. You know, there are requirements in the law for how long the minimum summer programming must be, in addition to like requirements around the coursework and the activities that students have to complete. But that's the first kind of point that I want to make here, is that districts can move and decide to implement summer programming, you know, right after school ends or kind of butting up against maybe the beginning of next school year. I think it's really important that we point that out because it means that as we get into this time period where this law is in effect, it'll be critical to kind of examine the impact of that law on when they decide to conduct summer programming. But more importantly, I want to talk about when the department actually releases TCAP data and kind of clarify maybe some misunderstandings there. So, this last school year, we released TCAP raw score data on, on May 20th. In layman's terms, and again, Casey, jump in if I, if I do a poor job with this, but raw score data is kind of the number of questions that a student gets right out of the total number on, on a given test. And we also released what's called a conversion table on May 27th. And that, those two items can be used to actually determine the proficiency level of a student. So even though we may be releasing, you know, individual student score reports slightly later, directors had the information last school year in mid to late May that they would have needed to communicate to parents or guardians that pursuant to the law and based on their performance on TCAP, they, they might be identified for retention. And Casey can go into a little more detail on when actual score reports are submitted too because I do want to make sure we clarify that on the record. But I also want to mention, this is true if you read through this rule, getting the ELA TCAP data is not the first time when a school district or a school can start to have that conversation with a parent. We have schools that obviously administer a variety of local benchmark assessments, some of them are, some of them are, go ahead, I'm gonna defer to Dr. Coons.
We actually, in response to directors across the state, have asked us to create a series of toolkits and letters of how to communicate with parents about at-risk data. Those will start in the fall of third grade, those will review the data that the district collects in second grade with those parents, then again in November, what is your current data system and the district saying, where is your child performing? And then again, after their winter universal reading screening data, which would be a predictor if they're struggling in reading, they again will not be able to apply those skills for the TCAP for, for that space. So we are actually providing a district with year-long sets of intervention model letters to provide parents with that early at-risk notification that is the child that is struggling. And also helps the district look at that data and really identify the pool of students who might be at risk for this, to make sure that their interventions are in place for those at-risk students regardless of those final scores, that they're really using an intervention-focused approach rather than a, oh, let's wait and see what happens on the TCAP approach, which is the whole intent, right, is to make sure that we're focusing on those intervention spaces.
I appreciate that, so, say a student is a terrible test taker, you know, and they're moving forward and doing things well, and, and they do poorly on the TCAP test, does that then put them into a situation where they, you know, either have to go to a summer camp or go, you know, and, and/or tutoring or something like that?
Let's hold that question to the appeals.
And I, and I can, I can handle that, and thank you, Dr. Coons, because I think that that is a really good example of just the variety of touchpoints throughout the year at which a, a school system can and should be communicating with parents about the likelihood that their student might be identified for retention. I actually want to let Casey describe, I, I, we will come back to your question about the TCAP as the measure and options there, but I want to let Casey talk about too, after the raw score data, like when the actual score reports come out that that comment was in reference to, to make sure to clear that up first too, before we move on.
Absolutely.
So, thank you, Madam Chair and Vice Chairman, Mr. Eby. I think one of the things I heard mentioned in your timeline that you rolled through for Oak Ridge was the comment about when public TCAP data was released and then when the embargo period was for that data. And I do want to make sure that when we have a variety of data releases for our assessment data, the first of which, with which Jack has already referenced are our raw scores, and these are by law required to get out within five days of the end of instructional calendars, and that's because they're required to be used in, in grades for, for most of our students across the state. So this year, we delivered our high school scores, I believe it was May 16th or 17th, and our, our ACH scores May 19th, so before that May 20th date that we have in contract with Pearson to require, to deliver those raw scores. And based on feedback that we heard from the field of, Casey, the, the raw scores don't give us those proficiency levels, right, because there, there may be slight changes year to year in the test, we want to make sure that we have that information early and not waiting until that comprehensive data file with every single scale score and performance level to be able to have this information. So this year, we actually published those raw score to scale score conversion tables earlier than we ever have before. So this year, we were able to get those out one week after raw scores, so that was May 27th, which would have been very closely in line with the last days of school for, for most of our districts across the state. And that information, while it's embargoed from a public media release, right, we don't want an individual district to make announcements about state averages, for example, before the state presents that information in a coherent way. That is the district's data, and they are allowed to use that data with internal conversations and start moving forward and acting upon that data as soon as they have it. So, as soon as they get that, that vetted, quality-checked data, they can then start having conversations with individual families, they could have planning conversations with their educators, and us delivering that, that data as quickly as we do is in response to their request to be able to do that. So this year, those scale score conversion tables were available at the end of May, and then were quickly followed up on June 10th with the comprehensive data file that then gives the, the full list of scale scores and performance determinations for every single student, so they would have had that at the beginning of June.
Yep.
So again, and what you're saying is if a district chooses to have their summer camp early, like beginning June 1st, and, and they get their data, their raw data on the 27th, that's still not within the 10, you know, doesn't give the 10-day period, but hopefully there are other processes, other indicators throughout the year that they can be talking to them, that they would encourage the students to go ahead and sign up for the summer camp at that time?
And just to clarify, I believe that, is the 10-day period you're referencing the notification that your child is, is retained? That, and that references before the beginning of the next school year, I believe? So, so that, so that would, the timeline we're discussing here wouldn't be in conflict with that? Because again, that's 10 days before the beginning of the next school year.
If they take the summer camp.
Right, and if they are identified for retention.
Okay.
The, the last two things I'll just say about the timeline here, I, I do want to call out, there is a requirement in the rule, which we carried over from the existing policy, that notification be made, I believe in February, if a student is even believed to be at risk for retention. So that's kind of, at risk would come before they're even identified and certainly before they're actually retained. So, I just want to point out that that requirement is actually, of early notification is in the rule. And then the final thing I'll just kind of say is that these, you know, these timelines are, are there for a reason, and I just want to stress that, you know, Casey and her team have worked very, very hard to make sure that we are getting data back to school directors and principals. It is not lost at all how important that that is in this process, and I just want to say that we are absolutely committed to getting that data back in a timely fashion. I wanted to also just comment, the question you asked a moment ago, just about TCAP as the sole measure, that is in the law. That, that is not something that this rule can, can contemplate at all because the requirement that a student is identified for attention based on their ELA performance is, is copy and pasted from the law. What I will say, and Dr. Coons can speak in more detail about this, is, of course, if you look at the appeals process that we were directed to create, that is where there can be in addition to measures, performance on a benchmark and performance on the screener to potentially come in and say, I know that my student was identified, they're approaching, here's my avenue as a parent or guardian to, to try to appeal that retention, that retention decision.
The, one question that they brought up had to do with the timing of the appeals process, and I'm not exactly sure, but they said there's insufficient time between the release of the scores and the beginning of the school year for the parents to engage in that appeal process. But again, what you're saying is that they should have upfront information data before the scores get publicly released.
Absolutely, and I, I would, I would hope and absolutely, just having visited so many of our schools and districts, I, I'm fully confident and expect that our directors of schools and our principals are having communications with parents and guardians. You know, if, if your child is not performing anywhere near proficient on their bench You know, if your child is not performing anywhere near proficient on their benchmark assessment or their screener, that you're notifying that parent or guardian, hey, like, they haven't taken TCAP yet, but here are your options, right?
And that's what the director has asked us to do in June. Give us a toolkit to help us timeline this out, make sure we are speaking to the statute, make sure we're providing the appropriate communications with our families, make sure that we have templates of letters and talking points. And so we drafted that for them, presented that for them in July. They gave us feedback. We've also asked our superintendent study council to give us another round of feedback, to provide template letters, to provide early intervention communications, to provide guidance on those interventions and how important those early interventions are, and how they can guide their teams to really think about that and support that. So we are trying to provide guidance and support in relation to the timelines and making sure we're supporting our districts, thinking about that early intervention process with a lot of feedback cycles from our superintendents and our supervisors to make sure we're giving them what they are asking for.
And the last thing I'll mention is, there is also in addition, and there's a requirement in the law, not just the rule for that early notification, based on them not being proficient on screeners, just for this very purpose, right, this timeline conversation we're having so that it isn't a surprise when their TCAP data comes back. So it's, really, if you look at the law and then in conjunction with the rule, these timelines are explicitly driven by the requirements in the law. And there are things that we at the department are doing and will continue to do to help districts meet that timeline. There are things that districts are going to have to do to meet that timeline as well. And like Dr. Koons said, we are here and committed to help them do that because we recognize it as a shared process.
Okay, I've got two more questions here, and then I'll yield to someone else and come back later. If a student or parent selects the option to retest, will TDOE be able to administer the assessment and deliver the results prior to the next school year?
Yes, so I'm happy to respond to that. We are currently working to develop that assessment right now. We actually developed and piloted a retest this year as part of the third grade pretest for our summer programs, and we're evaluating the results of that right now to improve the design. The thinking is that if we are able to deliver that, most likely in early June in a computer-based format, it would be a retest of the spring third grade test. It would already be equated, and we would be able to score that immediately and provide those results immediately.
Thank you. And then what are the state-approved standards-based benchmark assessments that can be used for the appeal? They reference 7F5II.
Absolutely. So similar to the universal reading screening process that we went through, we collected all the universal reading screeners used across the state to make sure they were aligned with the necessary components to measure reading. We'll do the same thing with the benchmarks. We'll collect all the benchmarks through a survey process this fall after they've gone through their purchasing and processes, make sure those are aligned to standards, and that's the threshold. Is your benchmark aligned to Tennessee standards? As long as it's aligned to Tennessee standards, it will be on that approved list to make sure that districts have something that is aligned to standards that they can use in that process.
So it sounds like there's some additional communication that needs to go between TDOE and the districts to address the issues brought up.
Yes, and potentially even some changes made to policy too, right? Like there are elements of this process, you know, defining adequate growth on the pre and post-test. There are things that we've been in conversation with for well over a year now and are planning to bring in a policy to kind of further flesh that out, and that could potentially be one area that we can explore in addition to just communication.
And your comment about guidance is exactly why we're putting that toolkit together and getting those questions and feedback, and I've received some of the similar questions that you've received, to make sure we're able to answer those in that guidebook and making sure we're getting all of those questions in a package for our districts.
Excellent, thank you. I'll yield, I've got a couple other questions later, but go ahead.
Are there other questions? Mr. Mullenhour?
Thank you. I'm going to read just briefly, this is point 03, number 14. I'm going to read just the first sentence. It says, "Local boards of education and public charter schools shall not prohibit or impede the transfer of a student from a category four church-related school, category five private school, or a home school to a public school of the state." So that's the language, it's one of the edits that's been proposed in this rule. I would hope that we would never have to even state the obvious, and this strikes me as being something that would be obvious, that we should never expect to see a local school board or a public charter school refuse to allow a child to enter their doors. But nonetheless, I'm glad that you, that someone thought to put it here. I'm a little, my, I'm a little dis, I'm a little concerned that we had to state it in the first place. So that brings me to my next statement, which is, my understanding of this rule is that if a child, A, a child can't be prohibited from transferring into a public school, but in terms of what grade they're going to enter into, there's discretion left to the principal of the school, which I understand there needs to be, there needs to be some discretion. My concern is, if we have a school that we're having to say in the first place, hey, you can't close your doors to these children, I'm a little concerned that we're leaving discretion to that, perhaps that same person, to then determine which grade to place that child into. I see that there's a provision here that allows for student scores, and I may read the last sentence of that same section, 14, "Student scores from a recognized standardized test may substitute for the required comprehensive written examinations." Again, these are the examinations that would be at the discretion of the principal to then place that child in the school. My question, Jack, for you, and just kind of contextual here, is it's not real clear, you know, what recognized standard tests are. That may be a term of art that I may be overlooking. It also doesn't say who has a discretion to determine the word "may" in this particular case. Is there any reason why we would not want to add, for example, where it says, "Student scores from a recognized standardized test may," comma, and then I'm going to ask if this addition would make sense, "at the option of the parent or legal guardian, comma, substitute for the required comprehensive written examinations." In other words, would it make sense to, if, it can either be at the discretion of the principal, and the vast majority of principals presumably are going to make a correct, well-meaning determination, but in the event that a parent or guardian gets the sense that the principal may be hostile to their child even entering into their doors, again, I'll reference the previous section, the previous language in the same section, as long as they have a recognized standardized test to show what grade level they should be at, would it make sense to allow the parent or the legal guardian, to allow them the discretion to say, this is the grade that they need to place in, and here's the standardized test that we have to substantiate that? What are your thoughts, Jack?
I will defer to Angie Sanders. I don't see any issue on the department's side with making those revisions, but since this is a section of the rule that we didn't update as part of our work here, I will defer to Angie Sanders.
Got it, thank you.
Sure, this is on. Great question, Jordan. I'm glad you asked this. So this revision actually came out of the discussion that we had with the Non-Public Schools Advisory Council when we were discussing the non-public school rules. And what they pointed out is that the language that's currently in this section was not actually in alignment with what the law said. And we've made those revisions to the non-public schools rule, but we wanted to make sure that this provision of the rule was in line with what the law says. The language that you pointed out is pretty much verbatim from the law. So the General Assembly at some point felt that it was important to be very clear that students from category four, category five could not be prohibited from transferring. The thing we are adding on top of the law here is that this also applies to homeschool students. It doesn't mention in the law homeschool students, but the advice that I know both myself and I know in talking with the General Counsel of the department, how they advise districts with regard to homeschool students is that you should treat a homeschool student transferring in the same way that you would treat a student coming from a category four, category five school in terms of how you determine their placement when they come to the school door. So that's the only additional provision we've added. I don't know that we can add to say at the discretion of the parent, again, because it says "may" in the law, and it doesn't add that piece around the parent or guardian. It's up to the decision of the LEA in terms of how they craft their policy and whether or not they are going to accept a standardized test. So that would need to be fleshed out in the local board's policy. Are they going to even require a test? Because the way that this was written previously, if you read the old language, was that they had to test the student, and it was pointed out by the Non-Public Schools Advisory Council that, no, the law says "may." So we're grateful for that being pointed out, and we're agreed that that needed to be changed. But the local school board would need to have a policy in terms of if they are going to test them, what tests are they going to accept? Are they going to develop their own? Are they going to allow a standardized assessment to substitute for that? And if they use, let's say, a standardized assessment for students coming from, I think it mentions in the law, from other schools in another state, that they would have to allow a student from a non-public school to be able to use that same test to transfer in.
I'm going to, I see that Nate has a comment, and he's an expert on this more so than I am, so I'm going to cede to him.
I have one question. What is the appeal process? So run Jordan's scenario out and say that does happen, and the parent and what they've brought to the school and what the school has now assessed don't align. What's the appeal process look like for that?
I don't believe that there is one. I'd need to look for sure and get back to you, but I don't know that the law provides for a way for the parent to appeal that decision. It's up to the local school district in terms of placement decisions. So once they determine that the student should be placed in, for example, the second grade rather than the third grade, I don't know, absent a local board policy, that they would have the ability to appeal that, but I do want to check on that and get back with you.
One other question, just, you know, in section 13 and 14, there's a distinction between category one, two, and three schools and category four and five schools and homeschools. Do we know why there is a distinction that a different set of rules apply to four, five, and homeschool versus one, two, and three?
I believe that it has always been set up that way in the rules in terms of the accrediting standards that those schools have to comply with. When you look at the non-public schools rules, the one, two, and three schools have to meet a higher standard. There's a lot more requirements around accreditation, and that rigor translates to your credits automatically transfer from a non-public one, two, or three to a public school. That's an incentive, I think, for those schools to go through that more rigorous accreditation process and gives parents peace of mind that if I send my child to a non-public one, two, or three school, they're going to be able to seamlessly transition into a public school if I ever decide that that's the direction that I want to go. So the four, five, and homeschool, there's just a little bit less rigor there in terms of their accreditation, in terms of what the state is holding them to, so that's the reason for that difference.
Madam Chair?
Yes, proceed, please. Sorry.
So Angie, just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, would it be within the board's purview today to make the proposed amendment that I mentioned earlier to essentially allow for the parents to make the determination of whether or not the standardized test would place the student?
I don't think that we have the authority in the law to do that. Again, because this, that language about the standardized assessment "may substitute" is in the law, and it's referring to what the decision of the LEA.
So just to go back, and I'm not challenging you, you're the expert here, you know, we added the term "homeschool" beyond the statutory language. In that same line of thinking, do we not also have the discretion to add this additional edit?
I, the, homeschool is in addition to what the law says. So the law doesn't address homeschool students, so through our power, we have the ability to expand that. But because the law seems to be specifically speaking to the power of an LEA to determine these things, I don't know that we can carve out the ability for the parent to make that decision. This, we are hoping to do, what the plan is to do, is to take this language out of this rule entirely, once the non-public school rules are fully promulgated, because it's confusing to have this language in two different places. So certainly something we can continue to look at, we can have conversations with legislators if you think that that's something that maybe needs to actually change in the period of time when we're thinking about those non-public schools rules coming before the board.
Okay, okay. I guess I'll leave it on this then, and thank you, Angie, for that excellent insight. Again, I'm a little, I'm thankful for, but I'm a little disturbed by the fact that the legislature would even have to write into law that first sentence, because again, I would hope that local school boards would be inviting of all kids. It seems like this is something that we, that we would want to keep an eye on and that maybe legislators would want to keep an eye on, so that to the extent that we find that there's indications that there's still hostilities that are being bent against students from category four schools, homeschoolers, and so forth, that we would act quickly to resolve those issues. So I'm going to mentally flag this as something that we should watch going forward. I appreciate you guys' work on this, thank you.
And then, just as a follow-up to my previous comments, I'd just say, as we're looking to integrate these, take out of here, put over in the non-public, just a process of appeal of some sort of in these category fours and fives, if there's discrepancies between the institutions coming from the four, five, or homeschool with the public school they're transferring to, that just, there is some system that allows, I think, objectivity or equity among, you know, and really trying to be objective between the family and the, and the school itself, and want to respect the school saying, I know we have requirements that we're held to by the state, we have requirements that we need to, I mean, all the stuff we've talked about from TCAP and everything else, very legitimate, want to make sure kids coming in are placed appropriately and have adequate instruction for their present level of performance. But duly, also want to, you know, make sure that there is voice for a family coming in if there's discrepancy between those and that there's a equitable process for both discovery and findings within, whenever there's a conflict.
Yeah, we can certainly look at that.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Holt?
Is there anything in the legislative history, and I might direct this to Nathan James or anyone else who may happen to know about this idea of a history of hostility to these students? Because so much of the conversation that Jordan was having, I think, is predicated on this understanding that there is or has been a history of hostility. I'd just be interested to know how much of that is something that was discussed in the legislative record?
Well, I can't speak to exactly what's in the legislative record. I can tell you from my experience around the legislature for the last couple of decades, there's always been a concern about tension for students coming, you know, from a category five school. You know, I've watched that concern in a lot of different conversations. I'm certain that it's come up in committees, but, you know, I wouldn't say it's an overwhelming thing. It's just there's always a sense that there's a bit of tension underneath the discussions, and so that's what I think Mr. Mullenhour is referring to, because the category five schools are, you know, they don't, they're not exactly the same as anything else. They're, they're, they just hold a unique place.
Thank you.
Back to Mr. Eby?
Yes. Thank you, a couple other questions. Talking about the academic remediation plan, it says, "adjustment to the current instructional strategies or materials," and this person's concern was that the materials is very vague. They're afraid the teachers would reduce the rigor of the material they're using. In some cases, material would not be aligned with grade level standards.
So I'll defer to Dr. Koons to kind of comment on that word, "materials."
I do think there was a recommendation to use the word "high-quality instructional materials," which is the shift in language we've used with academic programming to distinguish between just anything you can hunt and gather to teach with to your curriculum that has been approved. So I do think there's an opportunity to amend and say, "high-quality instructional materials" to meet the threshold that that concern was rooted in, I think.
Yeah, I think that would, that'd take care of it. And then another one, talking about this academic remediation plan, will TDOE be part of this guide kit that you provide, a guide kit on what an academic remediation plan would be? And I assume the districts would be the ones that would put that together, but will you provide a guide kit for that?
We are happy to provide anything that the districts asked for, so if they have asked you for that, I will take that recommendation and put that in the kit.
And I'll just call out too, real briefly, that reference to those plans is something that also was carried over from the old policy, so that, it should be something that districts are already at least a little familiar with in the scope of kind of carrying on with retention in case... in the scope of kind of carrying on with retention in K through eight broadly. But as Dr. Koons said, we can certainly think about ways to tailor and further facilitate, especially for, for third grade, right, for third and fourth, which are the critical grades called out, called out in public chapter one.
I also think it would be helpful, given our conversation yesterday and the plans that are being put in place from the TESA law, that this might be helpful to draw connections to, so we're happy to do that.
Thank you. And then this one, I'm not sure you can do anything about it, it's problematic, but I just want to read it. First, the law, the rule says, "A student in grade three shall not be promoted to the next grade unless the student is determined to be proficient in English language based on the student achieving a performance level rating on track or mastered on the ELA of the student's most recent TCAP test." And this director has specific concerns listed below, "But in general, the law negates all research and indicates retention that not an effective solution for most children can cause damage socially and emotionally, which since the COVID-19 pandemic, we've seen extremely hard to address and remediate. In addition, approximately two-thirds of our students are failing TCAP rating." You know, actually, grade three is seventy-one point six percent, sixty-four point six, four percent of fourth graders. This means we could potentially be retaining over half our third and fourth grade students. This is problematic at the building level with staffing, master schedules, teachers having to be reassigned to grade levels. I'm not, I don't know how, if you want to say anything about that or not, but...
I would, I would love to comment and I'd invite my colleagues to kind of also jump in as necessary. You know, first and foremost, I just want to stress that, that if you look at the law, public chapter one and the rules, it, it is really not about retention, it is really about early intervention. It's about identifying students who are not on grade level in ELA and providing them high-quality, early interventions to make sure that when they do move on to fourth grade, they can achieve proficiency. So, that's the first thing I'll say. I mean, if you look at the approaching students and that the, the options that are available to them, you know, being held back should be the last-case scenario that takes place in that school district for that student after all other opportunities have been offered to that student and, and exhausted. The other thing I'll just say about the kind of non-academic piece, we are in schools and districts all the time and Dr. Koons is in them even more frequently than I am. And, you know, the department has, of course, trauma-informed schools work that we engage in, but in every single school that I've ever visited in, especially this summer on our bus tour, you know, I have full confidence in our, in our school districts and our teachers and our principals to take care of that part of it as well, right? So, I think when you couple their ability and the fact that supporting students in non-academic ways is going to maybe look different across the state with the fact that this is really about early intervention, not about retention, I think we're going to move towards a space, and we already are moving towards a space, but we're going to see our, our proficiency rates increase. And I'll, I'll call out real fast that the TCAP results from this last year, although we still have obviously gaps, were incredibly encouraging, especially in the area of ELA. And I think a lot of that has to do with the hard work of our teachers and principals and implementing some of these remediations that are in, in the law and the rule.
I would just like to add that this board has done a great deal of work around universal reading screeners, implementing the Tennessee Literacy Success Act, which actually allows us to see how children are developing all the way into kindergarten. So, that is a shift. It's a better understanding of how our students are progressing. It allows us to put that early intervention in place in a much more intentional way. And I want to compliment your work and our district's work because it's putting systems together that allow us to understand early intervention in a way we've never been able to do before. And having those pieces and those supports in place allow us to give those students much earlier intervention because we know the data around third-grade reading and we know the data around our third-grade TCAP. We, we know that those are gateway opportunities for children. So, we've got to move towards this early intervention approach and putting a lot of these systems and supports in place allow us to be much more successful.
Thank you. Just a couple more questions. Talks about tutors, T A L L C, high dosage tutors. What qualifies as a Tennessee Accelerating Literacy and Learning Core tutor? Who will provide that training?
So, I'll, I'll kind of provide an overview and Dr. Koons can jump in. If you look in the rule, the thing that unifies the tutoring option is whether or not the tutoring is high dosage, low ratio. That is the research-backed tutoring strategy that has been shown to be effective in these cases. It is not the same as teaching to a classroom of twenty-five or thirty kids. And tutoring can also take place or happen in a bunch of different ways across the state. It can be help with homework, it can be actually drilling test questions, or it can be more kind of structured and standards-aligned. And so, the other thing that I'll say here, so we have some districts that participate in, in the grant program that we provided to help kind of get high dosage, low ratio, T and all core tutoring off the ground. Other districts can still provide that. The only requirement is that they go through the training that the department offers. And again, the reason that that's so critical, that the unifier there is, is our training is because high dosage, low ratio is research-backed and it has certain characteristics. And we want to make sure that if the approaching students and below students who are taking advantage of that are, are getting tutoring, it's, it's based on the same standard. And I'll, I'll defer to Dr. Koons to add any more additional detail.
Yeah, so our high dosage, low ratio model that is in the Tennessee All Core, those letters that you just mentioned, is based in the Annenberg Research. That's the foremost research right now around tutoring impact and what actually changes students' opportunities. We have all had children tutored, been in tutoring situations, and as Jack mentioned, that's a varying understanding of tutoring. The goal of this is to make sure they go through that training, understand what that research says around high-quality tutoring, so we make sure that intervention is equitable for all of our at-risk children. So, it's really about going through, and it's not a long training. It's about six hours of asynchronous training that can be held at any point in time virtually. And it allows that tutor to understand, this is what high dosage, low ratio tutoring is versus what you may have done, and this is what research says will make an impact for children.
Thank you. I'd just be sure that the districts understand what you're looking for. And then, the last, last point I have, there's one here, I'll read it. "Retention shall be considered only when it is the best interest of the student or the retention is required by paragraph seven for students in grades three and four. Retention decisions affecting a student receiving special education services shall be made in consultation with the student's IEP or 504 team in accordance with provisions IEP of the 504 Plan. This director thinks this is going to encourage parents to pursue a 504 classification for their student, which will take additional hours and S-team meetings to express the parent's request, and then hours of documentation from classroom teachers, school psychologists, school, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." So, that's the concern, I think, that the districts have, is this is going to add more time and effort.
I think if we're following the vein of early intervention, we want children to have intervention and we want parents to have the opportunity to ask for interventions and support opportunities. That part of the law says if a child has a specific learning disability, again, in those basic reading skills, the fluency and comprehension, then the IEP team will meet to determine whether that is the reason the child did not move forward or did not. There are several scenarios in that toolkit we've mentioned a couple times to help guide those decisions. But if a parent feels like a child needs support and challenges in reading, they, they should be getting supports. And it's important for us to follow and respect that parent's request for additional supports. And the district, in the same vein, should be providing those early interventions to support that child. This shouldn't be that lever that causes that to happen.
Thanks again from the districts for supplying these comments and thank you for answering these comments. I again encourage districts to provide comments and do it as early as they can. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Mullenhour.
Thank you. I'll make it brief. You know, one of the goals I know that we all share is to bring clarity, not, not just good policy, but also clarity around the policy. And I want to call out a couple things. One is, we had received, or the staff had received a letter from the TSBA. I just want to use this as an example of an outside organization that spoke to a specific language that's in this proposed rule. And I know that we made a number of edits based on that input. And the reason I want to highlight it is because sometimes it's easy for outside organizations or districts or, or even parents and educators to assume that their voice won't be heard for some reason. And I just, I think that, I know that the board is eager to hear from people and I know that the staff is eager to hear from people. And this is a perfect example where a letter came in, edits and communications occurred, and you see those, you see the results of their effort here. So, I want to thank the TSBA for taking the effort to send us the letter and then also just encourage everyone else to do so. I'm gonna run down a quick highlight. There's, there's three different subsections that use interchangeably the words guardian and legal guardian. I'm assuming that, that the two are synonymous. But again, in this, for the sake of clarity, just so that there's not a misunderstanding even years from now, I'd propose that, that we choose one word or the other, either guardian or legal guardian, and just make it consistent unless there's a reason to draw the distinction. Jack, I'm just gonna call out these subsections so you can take a look at them when you get a chance. This is point oh-three, fourteen C. There's two instances. There's point one-six or point sixteen-four, one instance, and then point sixteen-six-G, there's one instance. And then Angie, I know you're already sitting down, but just real quick, there was a typo at the end of six, point sixteen-six-F. I believe it, that the, it was the phrase, of five, five-oh-four Plan should be or five-oh-four Plan. Was that addressed or do we need to take action on that today to address the typo?
Angie Sanders. So, the typos I can certainly fix, which I know you flagged a few of those before we filed those with the AG and Secretary of State's office. In terms of the difference between guardian and legal guardian, my understanding is that all those references are meant to refer to the legal guardian. But since that's more of a substantive edit, I would ask that you propose that as an amendment to the rule and then I can make that fixed before it's filed.
Thank you. Then, I will wait for our madam chair's prompt when it's time to make the motion. And if that's okay, I will make the motion that we approve subject to those typos and I'll name them at that time. So, I'll wait for your prompt.
You can make that motion now. If you would be specific too, as to where the...
Yes, ma'am.
Because I'm trying to keep up with the notations you're saying, but what page, what number, et cetera.
Okay, yes, ma'am. I will reference the code section then for clarity. So, I make a motion that we approve item three I of the agenda, subject to the following changes. We would change the word guardian to legal guardian in the following subsections. In point oh-three, fourteen C, there's two instances. In point sixteen-four, there's one instance. And in point sixteen-six-G, there's one instance.
Madam Chair?
I believe that...
Mr. Eby has a motion too, but we'll hear these motions separately. Is that correct, Nathan? Is that the best way to do it?
The easiest way to, to do this might be simply to, to move these corrections as an amendment. So, it's in front of the body as a, as an amended document.
Okay.
And then, and then it would be in order for Mr. Eby or any other member to make another motion after that's disposed of.
Okay. So, we have a motion and you have everything that you need, Ms. Sanders? So, we have a motion for Mr. Mullenhour. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Eby provides a second. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Mr. Eby has another motion to make?
Yes, on six-G-two. I want to, where am I finding it here? Change the word of materials to high quali-, H-Q-I-M, high-quality instructional materials.
We have a motion for Mr. Eby. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cobbins provides a second. Any other discussion regarding this recommendation? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and the amendment is approved. So, we have two amendments. We can move into approval, but is, are there any other discussion points from any other members before we do that? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item with the two amendments you just approved?
Second.
We have a motion for Mr. Holden, a second for Mr. Mullenhour. Any further discussion? This requires a roll-call vote. Mr. Griffin?
Mr. Cobbins?
Aye.
Mr. Darnell?
Aye.
Mr. Eby?
Aye.
Mr. Holt?
Aye.
Mr. Jensen? Mr. Mullenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Morrow?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Madam Chairman?
Aye.
Madam Chairman, you have eight ayes.
The ayes have it and the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Excellent work and great questions from our members. Next item is J, educator evaluation policy. Ms. Martha Moore?
Good morning again. I am Martha Moore. I'm the Senior Director of Educator Effectiveness and I'm here to address educator evaluation policy five-point-two-zero-one on final reading. State Board Educator Evaluation Policy five-point-two-zero-one further defines State Board Educator Evaluation Rule by providing additional detail about evaluation requirements, including outlining alternative charter school observation models and alternative achievement measures that can be used by educators to factor into teacher evaluation. On first read, this item presented revisions to the list of approved charter alternate observation models, appendix A, and approved achievement measures to appendix B. Two charter observation models upon department content expert review were recommended for approval. Also shared were a number of updates to the achievement measure selection options for teachers. These included the addition and removal of various assessments based on previously shared criteria. Between first and final read, revisions were made to align with public chapter nine-fourteen of the one-hundred-twelfth General Assembly. Public chapter nine-fourteen amends TCA forty-nine-one-three-zero-two D-B, excuse me, D-two-B-three by allowing teachers to use the results from benchmark assessments, including state-adopted benchmark assessments or universal reading screeners approved by the State Board of Education as student achievement measures. This is for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. All approved universal reading screeners listed in State Board Policy five-point-two-zero-one and three-point-three-zero-two are already included in appendix B. The department recommends the addition of, of the following state-adopted benchmarks, the mock interim assessments. The mock interim assessments are a complete blueprint-aligned set of assessments that mirror the current TCAP summative assessments for every tested grade and subject, as well as provide accurate scaled scores and performance bands that estimate each student's performance. Additionally, in response to pandemic-related evaluation challenges, the State Board passed a professional development point accrual policy for the twenty-twenty-twenty-one school year only. Revisions between first and final reading remove the language specific to the twenty-twenty-twenty-one school year to increase clarity in the policy. In removing portions of the policy specific to the twenty-twenty-twenty-one and twenty-one-twenty-two school year, we inadvertently removed a sentence of the current policy that should remain. On page two of the policy, we request that a paragraph be added as paragraph four stating, "Any non-PYE educator without an LOE in the previous year shall have the maximum number of observations conducted based on the educator's license type." As such, we also request that the subsequent paragraphs be renumbered accordingly so that the paragraph starting with "School administrators shall have at least two onsite observation, observations annually" is numbered as paragraph five. The Department of Education recommends approval of this item on final reading and the State Board staff concurs with this recommendation. Thank you for your time and please let me know if you have any questions.
Before we do that, I, I do want to note that because you said there was something that was inadvertently deleted...
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to ask for unanimous consent to reinsert the deleted, deleted paragraph. And without objection, that would be so ordered. Hearing none, it is so ordered. So, with that being said, I do want to ask if there are other questions or comments from members. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item? Mr. Eby provides the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Morrow provides the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is approved. Thank you very much for your great work. Item K, educated preparation provider and program reviews. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. Annie Insana, Senior Director of Educator Preparation with the Tennessee Department of Ed. The State Board Educator Preparation Rule zero-five-two-zero-dash-zero-two-dash-zero-four-dash-point-zero-seven governs EPP expectations related to standards and program design and outlines the EPP review and approval process, including how EPPs are held accountable... how EPPs are held accountable for performance and the status recommendations that can follow the EPP comprehensive review process. This item presents revisions to the rule in alignment with the department's continued emphasis on improved student literacy. To ensure the department and the State Board have the tools to recognize and hold EPP's literacy-focused specialty area programs accountable as they seek to demonstrate compliance with requirements set forth in the Tennessee Literacy Success Act, this recommendation provides a pathway by which the department could bring a status change recommendation to the State Board of Education for any specialty area program leading to licensure prior to a comprehensive review. There were changes before, excuse me, between first and final read to align the rule with Public Chapter 974 of the Public Acts of 2022, which included providing information on each annual performance report regarding the results of the department's review of EPP instruction aligned with the foundational literacy skills standards established pursuant to the Tennessee Literacy Success Act. Happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions? Mr. Mullenhour?
Madam Chair, thank you. Just a very brief comment. In item seven, the very first reference to the term department, I believe that should be capitalized again, just in an effort to bring clarity. I assume that that's a defined term.
Yes, sir. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item? Mr. Eby provides the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Holt provides a second. Any discussion? This one requires a roll call vote because it is a rule. Casey Griffin?
Mr. Cobbins?
Aye.
Mr. Darnell?
Aye.
Mr. Eby?
Aye.
Mr. Holt?
Aye.
Mr. Jensen?
Mr. Mullenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Morrow?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Madam Chairman?
Aye.
Madam Chairman, you have eight ayes.
The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item L, Educator Licenseur Policy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jack Powers with the Department of Education, and I am here to present on final reading a number of revisions to the State Board's Educator Licenseur Policy. So I will kind of go through those here. The first is to bring the policy into alignment with some requirements from Public Chapter Three from the 2021 legislative session, and that is the Tennessee Literacy Success Act. So specifically, that act, to ensure that all educators are trained in foundational literacy skills, requires by August 1st educators take, who are endorsed to teach in grades K through three and instructional leaders, it requires those educators to take a literacy assessment or a professional development course in order to advance their license, renew their license. It has the same requirements for an EPP candidate in order to acquire their practitioner's license. And so this item does contain that professional development requirement, and additionally outlines the kind of endorsements in that K through three grade band that would meet that requirement because they are instructing students in reading to have to either take that professional development or pass that content exam. Additionally, this item includes revisions to remove some requirements for occupational licensure advancement, just because we had some outdated requirements there from a period in which occupational prep programs weren't reviewed and approved the same way that our regular teacher prep programs are. And we really hope that those, that the removal of those requirements can kind of help streamline the path for occupational professionals to enter teaching. This item also includes some clarifying language about out-of-state licensure pathways, just to make sure that the out-of-state pathway for additional endorsements aligns with the current requirements for in-state educators. Additionally, we are proposing in this item two new endorsements. And then we did make some changes between first and final here. We added in pursuant to an administration bill from last legislative session, the computer science bill that we've talked a little bit about yesterday as well as today, a pathway for the department to kind of manage and offer a computer science endorsement program. We added the new limited license type here that we discussed earlier. And then we performed some other kind of clerical revisions. So a lot going on in this item, both between first and final reading and on first reading, and I'm happy to take any questions that board members may have.
So, Jack, I may have missed it, but is there somewhere in here that when adding on page 10 of the redline version, item six, adding computer science as a new pathway, what are the prerequisites for that course? I understand it will be managed and available through the department, so would you make some clarifying points for me there or point me where I would find, what are the eligibility requirements to take that endorsement and become certified?
So I do believe we still have Deb Noll in the audience. I may have to defer to her. But in terms of adding an endorsement to your license, is Deb still here? That's okay. I think, and I've also, I've got one more lifeline, but I think in terms of adding an endorsement, as long as you're a licensed educator, you know, some endorsements require coursework and some are test-only. I think in this case, the prerequisite would be bachelor's degree license, and then you complete the coursework, and there will be, I believe, an assessment requirement in this case.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any... Mr. Darnell?
I'll start off with a comment, just for the knowledge of the board. I have completed both the early literacy and the secondary literacy training, and so I want to share that those are tough. Those were tough. They were high-quality. And back there in the audience, Dr. Coons, this is for you. I don't intend, my calling was not kindergarten, to teach kindergarten. I found that out pretty quickly. My heart is with the middle grades, but I didn't want to lose my license. That was important to me to keep up with that. Also, having two young daughters who will eventually go into that early literacy, I thought it was important to study that and take that. So a little shout-out, that it was challenging. And many of those things I had forgotten 16, 17 years ago from that early literacy training that I did in college. So just wanted to share that with the board, that I had completed that, and it was high-quality. It was, I thought, worth my time to take it and remember a lot of that stuff.
Well, thank you.
Question that I have. I remember our discussions when this was created under number six on page 10 of in providing a new pathway for these endorsements. And I know that that is in the process, that has been started. I know people who have actually enrolled in that. When can we receive an update on, let's say, that first cohort of people who are going through this endorsement process? And just to know numbers, completion rates, et cetera?
Yeah, absolutely. We can share an update pretty much next week. I mean, as soon as I can get the information, I'd be happy to share it with you. You're absolutely correct. We've already kind of enrolled the cohort for the ESL additional endorsement as well as those special education endorsements. You know, what I'll mention here is just how I think critically important it was for the board to let us to do that. Allowing us to do that, I think, has helped us for, to kind of on-ramp the computer science endorsement in a way that'll be kind of ultimately effective. We've had some learning experiences through those additional endorsement programs. We've learned a lot about kind of the appropriate amount of coursework to keep candidates engaged. Obviously, there are differences here. This is a requirement in law, not just of the department to offer it, but we're moving towards a time period when this will be a graduation requirement in '24, '25. So there are a lot of things here, not just the requirement, but the benefit to workforce development, that I think will make this be even different from those in terms of the uptake, obviously, but also in terms of things like attrition through the program. But we're happy to provide that updated data for you. I can get you enrollment figures and completion figures. And like I said, we're, just know that we are actively kind of learning from the experiences that we have had offering those two pathways in order to inform this and make sure this is effective.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item?
Does that move?
Mr. Eby provides the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wells provides a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item M. Kathryn Johnson?
Hello again, Madam Chair. Hello again, Madam Chair and members. Kathryn Johnson, Deputy Director of Academic Policy for the State Board. I am here to present the Tennessee Academic Standards for Fourth-Year Mathematics Courses to you on final reading. Once again, Public Chapter and State Statute requires the State Board to go through a comprehensive standards review process. In February 2021, the State Board approved the Tennessee Academic Standards for Math for Grades K through 8, as well as the required high-school math courses on final reading. We did choose to review the fourth-year mathematics courses at a separate time to ensure alignment to changes in higher education. So some of the major changes that the fourth-year mathematics courses saw were aligning the state statistics standards to the statewide dual-credit courses to ensure students taking statistics have the opportunity to earn early post-secondary credit by taking the challenge exam. So whether the student is enrolled in a traditional statewide dual-credit course or the standard state statistics course, students will have the option of taking that challenge exam as the standard slash learning objectives are identical. Bridge Math has also been removed in favor of merging sales with statistics, as statistics will better prepare Tennessee students for entry-level mathematics courses at higher education institutions. At the higher ed level, we are seeing a shift from college algebra to statistics as the standard mathematics courses for non-STEM students. Additionally, the course formerly called Applied Mathematical Concepts was overhauled to expose students to concepts that will better prepare them to enter the workforce, the military, and/or pursue a technical degree after high school. This course is also now known as Mathematical Reasoning for Decision-Making. Finally, one small technical edit to fix numbering in pre-calculus was made since first reading. Once again, we recommend approval of this item on final reading, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item? Mr. Cobbins provide the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Darnell provides a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. I believe you have the next item.
Yes.
Item 3N?
The next three items are all related to each other and the movement to a 10-point grading scale. Item N is the Academic and Instructional Requirements Uniform Grading System Emergency Rule. This is virtually identical to the regular rule that I presented on first reading. Once again, this is just stating that for the 202223 school year, the statewide uniform grading system will be a 10-point scale. This does not prohibit an LEA from developing, adopting, or implementing a local grading system for the purposes other than reporting students' grades for post-secondary financial assistance, and it also allows districts to adopt the identical 10-point grading system at the K through 8 level. Once again, I am happy to answer any questions that you have on this item.
Are there any questions?
And I should clarify, this will be for approval on first and final as it is an emergency rule.
I made one comment during a meeting with the team, and it was just because I wanted to make sure that it was clear to everyone why we included the 2223 schedule until, no, it's until the 2223 schedule. We're including this past year's uniform grading schedule, and then the new one takes effect for the new school year. And so we're keeping the previous years included because the districts need to have access to that information. We want to keep that history at least for the next year or so. Is that correct? Or could you clarify?
Correct. It's, yeah, it's so that it's easy to see the change in the grading scale and so that districts can reference the previous grading scale versus the new grading scale. After a year or two, we will remove that from the rule.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item?
Does that move?
Mr. Holt provides the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I hear you. Sorry, I'm slow. Mr. Wells provides the second. Any discussion? Because this is an emergency rule, it requires a roll call vote. Mr. Griffin?
Mr. Cobbins?
Aye.
Mr. Darnell?
Aye.
Mr. Eby?
Aye.
Mr. Holt?
Aye.
Mr. Jensen?
Mr. Mullenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Morrow?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Madam Chairman?
Aye.
Madam Chairman, you have eight ayes.
The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Thank you, Kathryn. The next item?
Yes. Item O is the Uniform Grading Policy 3.301. Once again, this will be on first and final reading to ensure that it is ready for school districts for the 202223 school year. This also deals with the change to the 10-point grading scale in relation to credit recovery courses. Traditionally, as has been done through this past school year, credit recovery, if a student successfully completes that, they are given the minimum passing score, which, under the seven-point grading scale, was a 70%. However, with the change to a 10-point grading scale, that has moved to a 60% for passing. So this clarifies that in the 202223 school year and moving forward, the score given for a credit recovery course in successful completion will be a 60%. Happy to answer any questions, and we recommend approval of this item on first and final reading.
Questions on this item? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve? Mr. Cobbins provides the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Eby provides the second. Any conversation, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. I think you have the next item.
Yes. Item P is High School Policy 2.103. This, once again, is an identical change to what we saw in the Uniform Grading Policy. Credit Recovery courses are mentioned in the high school policy as well, so it's the same change to indicate that in the 202223 school year and moving forward, the grade given for credit recovery is a 60%, not a 70% in alignment with the 10-point grading scale. And once again, we recommend approval of this item on first and final reading.
Are there any questions on this item? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve? Mr. Darnell provides the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wells provides the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Thank you very much, Kathryn. You've done a great job here this morning.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Great work. Okay, the next item is Q, Educator Preparation Program and Specialty Area. This is Ms. Annie Insana again. As noted earlier in our consent agenda, we are pulling Rhodes College to vote separately on that item from the other items, just for clarification.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Annie Insana, Senior Director of Educator Preparation with the Department. The recommendations in item 3Q are related to three comprehensive review outcomes and two full approval outcomes that occurred in the fall of 2021, multiple instructional leader program review outcomes, and one prospective EPP recommendation. The specific comprehensive... The specific comprehensive reviews recommended today include three Cape State joint reviews, and the EPPs that participated in these reviews include East Tennessee State University, Middle Tennessee State University, and Milligan University. The review team for each of these EPPs concluded that all standards were met with no deficiencies. Each of these providers are recommended for full approval and full approval for all licensure programs. The full approval review outcomes recommended today include Rhodes College and Nashville Teacher Residency. Rhodes College, for Rhodes College, the review team concluded that the EPP meets expectations on Cape standards 1 through 3, but did not meet expectations on standards 4 and 5. The provider is therefore recommended for probationary approval with major stipulations. The specialty area programs are recommended for full approval, minor stipulations. For Nashville Teacher Residency, the review team concluded that all Cape standards were met with minor deficiencies. The provider is recommended for full approval, minor stipulations. The specialty area programs are recommended for full approval. For instructional leader programs were originally reviewed and approved in 2015 with a validity date through 2022. All existing instructional leader programs were reviewed between the spring of 2021 and the spring of 2022 to maintain state approval. The instructional leader programs recommendations brought today were reviewed off-cycle from their regularly scheduled comprehensive reviews to stay in compliance with the timeline. The instructional leader programs for the following EPPs are recommended for full approval: Bethel University, Carson Newman University, Cumberland University, Freed-Hardman University, Lee University, Lipscomb University, Tennessee State University, Tennessee Tech University, Union University, UT Chattanooga, and UT Knoxville. Finally, the department reviewed the Relay Graduate School of Education for recommendation of initial approval as a new EPP and specialty area programs in multiple endorsement areas. The department concluded that Relay Graduate School of Education meets expectations on the initial EPP proposal and is recommended for initial approval to proceed with the implementation of the new EPP and recommend eligible educator preparation candidates for endorsements in multiple program areas. This recommendation is recommended on first and final read. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, we will take a vote on all the items presented excluding Rhodes College. As I mentioned earlier, we will take that vote up separately. So is there a motion to approve all of these EPPs excluding Rhodes College at this point in time? Is there a motion? Mr. Eby provides the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Morrow provides the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is approved. Now we'll take up Rhodes College by itself. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Madam Chair, may I make a comment?
Oh, we do need to have discussion, I apologize. Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Mullenauer.
Just one quick comment here. It's, and I'm not suggesting that this happened in the case of Rhodes, but it can sometimes come about that people believe that the regulatory agencies or the people who are working every day in the department and on the board and other groups, other teams, have a rubber stamp in their hand, and that they're good at rubber stamping lots of documents. And I will say that my own experience here, coming from the private sector, is that they do a phenomenal job of looking into details and evaluating and considering and investigating. And, you know, I think that this is an example perhaps of where, and a reminder perhaps to all others, that they are serious about their responsibilities, they are serious about the implications of making sure that our state has the highest standards that we can for our students. And I would just say that as a mechanism for communicating to all future applicants in whatever, by whatever means, you know, the people at the department and the board, they take their job seriously. And I think that if we always saw approval of everything that came through, I would begin to question the efficacy by which our team is doing their job. And this is a reminder to me that we are doing it well, and we are scrutinizing, and we are digging into the details to make sure that students and educators and everyone else are served well. So thank you for your work on this.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments regarding Rhodes College before we vote?
One comment.
Yes, Mr. Robbins?
As a trustee of Rhodes, I'll be recusing.
Did everyone hear him? Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments about Rhodes College? If not, is there? Yes, Mr. Holt?
Madam Chair, was there a discussion about Rhodes College specific to, and why it has been carved out?
Because Mr. Robbins wanted to recuse himself, and we wanted to make that noted on the record.
Great.
So he could vote on all other items and recuse himself for this one.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve Rhodes College? Mr. Wells provides the motion, is there a second?
To clarify, Madam Chair, the motion is to approve the item, not to approve Rhodes College, I just want to make sure we're clear.
We're taking Rhodes College separately.
Yes.
We're voting on it separately.
Got it. Second?
Okay. Mr. Mullenauer provides the second. Any questions or comments?
I'll just follow up to what I think, clarify what I think Mr. Mullenauer was saying is that there were a couple of stipulations where they did not meet, and so they have a process that they have to go through and come back within a period of time, correct?
That's correct. Yes, that was pointed out. There are approval with stipulations, minor, there were some minors, but the real reason is major stipulations. Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving to the next item, Item R. Casey Ren, Standard Setting for Alternative Social Studies Assessments.
It is afternoon, so I will say good afternoon, Madam Chairman and members of the board. Casey Hognor Ren, Assistant Commissioner of Assessment. Per Tennessee Code Annotated, it is not only the duty of the board to set our academic standards that which we instruct our students, but it is also the duty of the board to set rules and policies for evaluating student progress and achievement of those standards, including evaluating teachers and measuring the individual educational achievement of our schools. The Department of Education administered our Alternative Social Studies summative assessments. These are what we call TCAP-ALT. They are assessments that are administered to our students with the most significant cognitive disabilities. They do measure standards that are aligned to the standards approved by this board, just like our general education TCAP, but they do so in a modified way to allow these students access to a measurement of their learning. We administered these assessments in the 21-22 school year, but our social studies standards did change a few years ago. Yesterday, or last year, I brought the standard setting for our general education assessment, but given the fact that we developed these alternative assessments in-house, we needed to go through a standalone field test in the first year. This year is the first operational test of these standards for our alternate program, and so I bring you the cut scores for our social studies alternate assessments in grades 6 through 8. Standard setting is a process by which we actually use Tennessee teachers and psychometricians, both in the department and with our assessment vendor, to review the assessments against the standards that our educators are meaning to teach. In that process, we actually use teachers that are familiar with this population of students, our special education educators. We also use content experts, so social studies educators, in addition to our special educators, to sit down and really deeply understand the standards that these assessments are measuring and setting cut scores based on the item difficulty and what our students are able to demonstrate. So I am bringing in this item those cut scores for our TCAP-ALT, social studies grades 6 through 8. I am also bringing in this item our cut scores for multi-state alternate assessment, which is our MSAA assessment for math and ELA. Tennessee is a, was a founding member of the MSAA Consortium to develop math and English assessments for students with special needs, with the most significant special needs. And they, that consortium is responsible for the standard-setting process of our MSAA exams. That standard setting was actually conducted several years ago, but upon reviewing all of our documentation for this, I did not find where those standards had been brought before this board, and I wanted to do that to be incredibly thorough. And so you have those in front of you today as well. So I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Mr. Holt provides the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mullenauer provides the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is approved. Thank you very much. Next item. 22-23 BEP allocations, Ms. Mary Ann Dersky.
Good afternoon. Mary Ann Dersky, CFO from the Department of Education. I'm here to present the Basic Education Program or BEP allocations for fiscal year 23. The attached allocations provide funding through the Basic Education Program and represent approximately $225 million in funding appropriations improvements over the previous fiscal year. The allocations include the following. The BEP instructional salary component is funded at $52,294. There is 100% funding for at-risk students in grades K through 12. Funding for English learners is funded at a ratio of 1 to 20 for teachers and 1 to 200 for translators. There are four categories of components: instructional salaries and wages, instructional benefits, classroom, and non-classroom. 70% of the instructional salaries and wages and instructional benefits is funded by the state, the remaining 30% is funded by the districts. The cost differential factor is implemented at 16%. For equalization purposes or for the determination of the local shares, the formula equally weights first the ability of local jurisdictions to raise local revenues by measuring their ability to generate revenue from property and local option sales tax, that is the SEVER model, and secondly, the ability of local jurisdictions to raise local revenues for education as determined by the multiple regression analysis model developed by the Tennessee Advisory Commission on Intergovernmental Relations, or TASER. Insurance funding for 12 months is included for all BEP-funded positions, and the classroom technology component is funded at $40 million. I will say that with the exception of the instructional salary component, all of that is consistent with what happened in FY23, or '22, rather. No change in any of that. Tennessee Code Annotated 49-1-212 requires that the department prepare a fiscal analysis of any policy, rule, or regulation proposed to the State Board of Education. The attachment outlines the BEP allocation for each LEA in the 2022-23 school year. This item may require a small number of LEAs to increase their local contribution in order to meet the required BEP local match. Upon review of current, or rather, of FY22 local contributions, the department has determined that no more than three districts would have to raise their local contribution in order to meet the required local match. The Department of Education recommends acceptance of this item on final reading, and the State Board of Education staff concurs with the recommendation. I am happy to take any questions that you may have. This being the last year, we will bring the BEP to you.
Exactly. First of all, Mary Ann Dersky, thank you so much for your excellent work. I've had the pleasure of working with you for a number of years, in particular when I became the Chair of the Board on the BEP Review Committee. I'm just going to go on record in saying I have been a fan of Mary Ann Dersky's for quite some time, and I've told her many times, well, I said it today, you cannot retire. I mean, you can, you can look at the level of detail that goes into the work that she does, and she's always a consummate professional, and everybody turns to her when we're in the BEP Review Committee meetings and as our, she's our resident expert. So, Mary Ann, thank you so much for your great work. And now I will
Thank you.
ask if there are questions or comments from other members. Mr. Eby?
Yes, again, and thank you, Mary Ann, for all that you do. Just maybe clarification purposes for people who might not understand, you talk about $225 million increase in BEP, the state touts that they are putting an additional close to billion dollars into the budget or something. Can you address the difference there?
Yes, the $1 billion will roll into the funding formula in fiscal year '24 with the implementation of TESA. This year, a large portion of that billion dollars has been set aside for innovative schools model that you've heard about, that's kind of reimagining our high schools. There is $125 million in the BEP for this year for teacher salary increases and other increases related to increase in average daily membership across the state and inflationary increases.
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight that innovative school model, because people might have been hearing one number and then they hear 225, so thank, thank for the state.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item on first and final reading? Mr. Eby provides the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mullenauer provides the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is approved. Thank you very much. Next item is Item T. Dr. Lisa Coons. Special Course Approvals.
Good afternoon, Lisa Coons, Chief Academic Officer for the Tennessee Department of Education. For final reading today, we are bringing to you the 22-23 Special Course Approvals. This is the additional list. State Board of Education Rule 0520103.05 and Special Courses Policy 3.201 allows local education agencies the ability to apply to offer special courses not listed in the State Board's Approved High School Course Policy 3.205. The Department of Education annually reviews special course and special course programs of study applications and assigns subject-specific course codes to special courses approved for one, three, or six years. The Board approved 22-23 Special Course Recommendations at May 20th Quarterly Meeting. After the May 20th Quarterly Meeting, the department received additional documentation from an LEA in a public charter school that clarified special course offerings and approval from their local boards. As a reminder, the special course review process begins in January. Districts complete a special course application process, their local board and their director of schools certify that application, and then the department provides content experts to review, legal experts to review Public Chapter 205, Public Chapter 493 if necessary, and review for existing courses that might fit the need of the special course. That tends to happen frequently with CTE courses, when we have special courses that might already be covered in an existing course, after which we make that recommendation, which we are doing today for those additional courses on first and final read. TCA 491212 requires that the department prepare a fiscal analysis for any policy, rule, or regulation. This has no fiscal impact on an LEA. The department recommends approval of this item on first and final reading, and the State Board of Education staff concurs with this recommendation.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Coons? Mr. Mullenauer?
Thank you. Just a quick comment, and Jack, I'm going to defer to you here in just one moment. We had had a discussion offline about trying to obtain some of this material so that we could review it in advance of today's meeting, and as I understand, there was a bit of a calendar conflict. Jack, if you could just speak to that very briefly, and my point in bringing this up is simply to emphasize that, and I believe is simply emphasize that, and I believe I am speaking for the, at least on behalf of my friends on the board here, we take the job very seriously. Part of the effort that's expended, in some cases weeks in advance of each of these meetings, is reading hundreds or thousands of pages of material. And, Jack, I just want to make sure that we are on a clear understanding that, from this point going forward, that we will have access to the full breadth of material that we're being asked to vote on so that we have a chance to review it. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. I can confirm that. I think this is something that I've already discussed with State Board staff, and I think this is a really good time for us to just kind of reevaluate what we submit when we submit special course approvals, because, quite frankly, that's kind of an annual reoccurring item, and it has been, as far as I know, presented with the same level of detail for many years now. But I think you're exactly right. I think, given, you know, everything that you said, it's a good time to reevaluate, and we can commit to beginning to ask or submit more information to the Board with these courses.
Thank you. In this particular instance, as I understand, the person who has access to these files is on vacation and wasn't able to get it to us quite in time, but we'll have them shortly after this meeting so that we can review post facto.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mullenauer. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Mr. Mullenauer provides the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cobbins provides a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is approved. Thank you very much. Item U, Physical Education Standards.
Good afternoon. Oh. Am I gone now? Hi. Good afternoon. Heather Peergees, Physical Education, Physical Activity Coordinator at the Tennessee Department of Education. Item U is Physical Education Standards for First and Final Reading. Tennessee Code Annotated 49130288 authorizes the State Board of Ed to set policies governing all academic standards and courses of study in the public schools. Additionally, State Board Rule 5213.051 calls for the State Board to adopt standards for each subject area, grades K-12. The approved standards are to be the basis for planning instructional programs in each local school system. State Board Standards Review Policy 3.209 requires that the Board review all sets of academic standards at a minimum of every six years. The physical education standards are scheduled to be reviewed and updated in July 2022. Due to pandemic-related challenges in the 2021-22 school year and the focus on learning loss recovery, the department decided not to conduct an extensive review process of the standards. Therefore, the department does not propose revisions to the, excuse me, to the current physical education standards. The department does plan, certainly, to conduct stakeholder outreach during the 2022-23 school year to identify revisions to the PE standards and propose recommendations to the Board in July 2023. This item has no financial impact on an LEA. The Department of Education recommends approval of this item on final reading, and the State Board staff concurs with this recommendation. And I'm happy to meet any questions you may have.
Are there questions? Mr. Eby?
It's not a question, but just a comment. I would hope that we will push forward on looking at licensing requirements for PE teachers, because that's an area, obviously, there's a great shortage on right now, and I think there's alternatives to the praxis exams, et cetera, that we ought to.
We've heard similar comments and questions and concerns, and are definitely happy to look into that moving forward.
Thank you.
I'm going to put you on the spot.
Yes, ma'am.
We had a pandemic, I understand. So what can be put in place to avoid delaying a review of standards in the future? Because we never know what's going to be around the corner, and certainly, no one could predict the impact of the pandemics. So just in general terms, what practices can be put in place so that if revisions are really needed at this juncture, we do not know if revisions are needed? What could we expect in the future?
That's a great question, and I think because we spent so much time, unfortunately, through our pandemic process, we did have some time to reflect and think, are there changes that need to be made now? Is it important to push and make a change? And I can say and attest to our last revision in 2016 was quite a very thorough and extensive revision, very comprehensive, and we had wonderful feedback from stakeholders. I, myself, was an educator in the classroom when it came about, and through the last six years, we've had a lot of contact with our stakeholders, both in person and through virtual connections, asking in a lot of those opportunities for feedback, and we didn't hear that there was anything pressing at this time to move forward. So we wanted to make sure that we gave teachers and schools a chance to get students in school and get them learning and get them through that process, and then take the opportunity to connect with our stakeholders in the field and make revisions as we see necessary.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Are there other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Mr. Eby provides the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wells provides the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is approved. Thank you very much. And how do you pronounce your last name?
Peergees.
Peergees?
Like you're fishing off a pier and some geese go flying by.
Because I don't want to mess it up next time, but I might have to ask.
That's quite all right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Item V?
I have the privilege of having the next item as well.
You do?
I do. Yes, Health and Wellness Standards, also for First and Final Read, and so we're going to hear a lot of the same thing, because it's exactly the same thing. So we can just go ahead to State Board Standards Review Policy 3.209 requires that the Board review all sets of academic standards at a minimum of every six years. The Health and Wellness Standards are scheduled to be reviewed and updated in July '22, but again, due to pandemic-related challenges in the 2021-22 school year and the focus on learning loss recovery, the department decided not to conduct an extensive review process of the standards. Therefore, the department does not propose revisions to the current Health and Wellness standards. The department absolutely plans to conduct stakeholder outreach during the 2022-23 school year to identify revisions to the Health and Wellness Standards and propose recommendations to the Board in July 2023. This item has no financial impact on an LEA. The Department of Education recommends approval of this item on final reading, and the State Board staff concurs with this recommendation. Happy to take questions.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Mr. Cobbins provides the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Was that Mr. Holt or Mr. Wells? Oh, all the way down there, Mr. Darnell. He's blocked by several people. We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item W, Fine Arts Standards.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members, and good afternoon. My name is Todd Shipley. I'm the Director of Fine Arts of the Department of Education. Education? Oh, sorry. I'll state that again for the record. My name is Todd Shipley, Director of Fine Arts for the Department of Education. Similarly, to my colleague with PE and Health and Wellness, a lot of the same information there, so I will save a little bit of the context, but State Board Standards Review Policy 3.209 requires that the Board review all sets of academic standards at a minimum of every six years. The fine arts academic standards are scheduled to be reviewed and updated in July 2022. Due to the pandemic-related challenges in the 2021-22 school year and the focus on learning loss recovery, the department decided not to conduct an extensive review process of the standards. Therefore, the department does not propose revisions to the current fine arts standards. The department does plan to conduct stakeholder outreach during the 2022-23 school year to identify revisions to the fine arts standards and propose recommendations to the Board in July 2023. Additionally, I'll also say our ongoing work with the State of the Arts Program will inform our review and revision cycle through data currently available from the Tennessee Arts Education Data Project and our ongoing state-of-the-art study to learn about the barriers to sequential arts, standards-based arts education experiences during the school day, understanding the landscape in terms of high-quality arts education offerings, and identifying resources and supports needed by district's teachers and students through our fine arts standards. This item has no financial impact on an LEA, and the Department of Education recommends approval of this item on first and final reading. SBE staff concurs with this recommendation. With that, I'm open to any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Mr. Cobbins provides the motion, is there a second? Mr. Holt provides the second. Any discussion? I'm sorry, Wells. Those two new guys, and they don't even look alike. Thank you. Yes, you do. Thank you. I needed an excuse. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is approved. Thank you very much. Next up is item X, Educated Licensor, Jack Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jack Powers at the Department of Education. This is just an emergency rule that is in alignment with changes that we made and that I spoke to previously in the meeting, basically creating the limited license pathway pursuant to Public Chapter 1093. The implementation date in that piece of legislation necessitated an emergency rule so that educators can begin to pursue this pathway, and so that is why this rule is in front of you today, and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve? Mr. Eby provides the motion, is there a second? Mr. Darnell provides a second. Thank you. This one requires a roll call vote. Casey?
Mr. Cobbins?
Aye.
Mr. Darnell?
Aye.
Mr. Eby?
Aye.
Mr. Holt?
Aye.
Mr. Jensen? Mr. Mullenauer?
Aye.
Mr. Morrow?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Madam Chairman?
Aye.
Madam Chairman, you have eight ayes.
The ayes have it and the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Powers. That concludes the items on final reading.
Good afternoon. Todd Madison, Staff Attorney for the Board, joined by my fellow staff attorneys Alex Anderson and Candace Carter. We have two items on the agenda, the first one being the Automatic Licensor Actions. State Board of Education is required to automatically revoke or automatically permanently revoke the license of an educator for certain criminal offenses and classifications set forth in law. As such, the State Board staff recommends the approval of this recommendation. Take any clarifying questions?
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve item 4A?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
One comment.
There is a question? Okay.
Just a comment. Is Alex Anderson here? Yeah, Alex. Okay, great. I just want to say, real quick, thank you for the diligence that you have displayed in researching each of these issues. You guys have done, once again, I think, a phenomenal job of both applying the rules, the law that applies, but then also doing it judiciously and doing it thoughtfully and making sure that we're not inappropriately penalizing someone, but at the same time protecting kids. And I just thought, I want to call you out specifically, in seeing some of the email chains that display your pursuit of the facts, I just want to commend you. You did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Mr. Mullenauer, any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Mr. Morrow provides the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mullenauer provides the second. Any other discussion? This item requires a roll call vote.
All right. Mr. Cobbins?
Aye.
Mr. Darnell?
Aye.
Mr. Eby?
Aye.
Mr. Holt?
Aye.
Mr. Jensen? Mr. Mullenauer?
Aye.
Mr. Morrow?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Madam Chairman?
Aye.
Madam Chairman, you have eight ayes.
The ayes have it and the motion is approved. Moving to the next item.
Yes, next up, we have the Recommendations for Denial and Discipline Recommendations Pursuant to Consent Order. That's items A through I. At this time, we can take any questions or further discussion.
Are there any questions on any of those items, A through I? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve we're taking all of these items together, A through I? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Cobbins provides the motion, is there a second? Mr. Wells provides the second. This requires a roll call vote. Mr. Griffin?
Mr. Cobbins?
Aye.
Mr. Darnell?
Aye.
Mr. Eby?
Aye.
Mr. Holt?
Aye.
Mr. Jensen? Mr. Mullenauer?
Aye.
Mr. Morrow?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Madam Chairman?
Aye.
Madam Chairman, you have eight ayes.
Thank you. The ayes have it and the motion is approved. Thank you so much for your great work. Mr. Mullenauer's comments, I have to say, I know I echo those, the great work that you all are doing in shoring up all the gaps where we've had in the past and ensuring that the Board is well-informed on each of these cases, and it's very rare now that we have questions or that we dispute what you all have recommended. So I want to add to those compliments because you do deserve them. So thank you so much. Great work.
Thank you.
Before we move into adjournment, does anybody have anything else they want to say for the record before we depart? Any closing comments? I want to say thank you so much for all of the presenters. Each one of you did an outstanding job between workshop yesterday and today, so thank you all so much for your hard work and your due diligence. And to the Board members, I think Mr. Mullenauer has many times made these comments, but it's absolutely true. This Board is highly engaged and takes all of this work incredibly seriously, and I'm going to just say, I applaud this Board and our team. We could not do it without our team, without our staff, and we could not do it without the partnership with the Tennessee Department of Education, so, yes.
Just real briefly, I think we must also add a huge thanks to our chair to my right, because this has been quite a meeting and a workshop yesterday, and she has managed beautifully.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It is definitely a team effort, and I hope you all have a wonderful weekend, and I will see you on the camera, on the TV, not the TV, the screen. We're going to be meeting virtually on August the 11th, so thank you all very much. We have a lot to do, a lot to accomplish. Have a great weekend. Bye.